Okay, we'll call this board meeting of June 17th to order. Welcome to your boardroom. And clerk, would you please call a roll?
Supervisor Foye. Supervisor Parks. Supervisor Long. Supervisor Zaragoza. Supervisor Bennett.
Here. And Anna, would you please lead us in the pledge here today?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have the minutes of the meeting of June 10th. I'm surprised we don't have the minutes of the meeting of June 16th yet. Way behind here. All right. We need a motion on those minutes. And a second. We have it. We're ready to vote. That motion passes. We're now for time for agenda review and Mr. Powers.
Thank you Chair Bennett. Get comfortable. There's a few. Number 12, County Executive Office, Resolution Amending Salary Range for Student Workers, Request Removal from Agenda. Number 16, Healthcare Agency, First Amendment with Gold Coast Neonatal Services, Inc., Request Removal from Agenda.
Sixteen. So 12 and 16.
Yep. Item 24 Supervisor Parks, Westminster Free Clinic Presentation, A PowerPoint Has Been Submitted. Item 25, Resource Management Agency, Resolution Approving the Engineer's Report Concerning Vector Control Benefit Assessments, A PowerPoint Has Been Submitted. Number 32, Human Services Agency, Presentation on the Status of Ventura County Foster Health Link Project, PowerPoint Has Been Submitted.
I want to point out that my understanding is we have to start that by 12 o'clock for Mr. Zimmerman if you're here. If it looks like we're not going to do that, is your preference is reschedule in the afternoon or go to next week?
The afternoon.
All right. We'll see how our scheduling is going.
All right. Item 42, County Executive Office, Application for Drought Proposition 84 Integrated Regional Water Management Implementation Grant, A Revised Exhibit 1 Has Been Submitted. Item 43, CEO's Office, Resolution Recognizing the Impacts of the 2014 Statewide Drought, A Revised Exhibit 1 Has Been Submitted. And Items 44, 45, and 46, Adoption of the 2014 Watershed Coalition of Ventura County Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, Request to Hear Those Items Together. That's 44, 45, and 46. And then there's an addendum agenda. Item number 49 Supervisor Bennett and Supervisor Long, Report Regarding the County's Participation in the Federal Department of Health and Human Services and the Department of Defense Shelter Project at the Navy Base Ventura County. A PowerPoint has also been submitted. Item 50, County Council, Report Regarding Legal Analysis of Proposed Pension Initiative. Item 51 Supervisor Bennett, Submission of the Ordinance Repeal of County Employee Pension Plan and Creation of Defined Contribution Plan for New Employees to the Voters on the November 4, 2014 General Election. And finally, Item 52 Supervisor Bennett, Direct County Council to Represent and Defend the County, Bless you, in any litigation brought by opponents or proponents of the initiative. And all documents have been distributed and posted. And that is it. Other than that, no changes.
So there actually, actually, there were, there were three addendums, or two, three addendums, one from County Council for 10:30 Time Certain and two, two addendums that that put on. Okay, you read the second. Okay. All right. Good. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Board members, any other modifications to the agenda?
March 1st approves modified.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as modified.
One more?
That passes. And and with that, we're ready for our moment of inspiration. It's really a pleasure to introduce somebody that truly is an inspiration to me every year when we get out and do work on homeless and one-stop and everything else, but Kate Mills. Been out there laboring away for a long time on the issue and stuff, so appreciate having you here this morning. Thank you for coming in Kate.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Mr. Powers, thank you very much. A little bit of history, that we opened the first one-stop in Ventura at the Public Health Auditorium in 2008. And it was a result of approximately, there were four or five of us that came together trying to figure out how to get notice to individuals who had no address, who are out on the street, how to get to them, their notice that they had been awarded some type of benefit, whether it was Medi-Cal, food stamps, whatever. It was an ongoing problem. And the more we talked and the more problems that we talked about having run into as individual departments, we saw that, that really what we were talking in terms of was what, what the county had been talking about for years. And that was one location where multiple services could be offered. As we began or continued the discussions, we discovered that it was probably better to have it on the same day of the week. It would be better if we had it every day, every week on that same day and during the same period of time, so that people out in the community didn't have to think about, is this the third Monday, is this the fourth Tuesday, whatever. They knew that on every Tuesday, we would be offering the one-stop in Ventura. We opened it, shortly before we opened, a little lady stood up from one of the community meetings and said, "Do you have any need for volunteers?" And I almost fell over. Yes, yes, I have a need for volunteers. So I had my first volunteer and from that point on, individuals from the community have come in and offered to assist us in any way possible. I have a geologist, I have a nurse, I have individuals who are going through school and are doing this as part of their internship program, trying to find out what's available within the community. We also have a wonderful blend of our nonprofit agencies. Turning Point is actually representing us, the nonprofit agencies most, and they're the link into the homeless-to-home program for us. We have the STAR program. We have food stamps in general relief there. We have the medical clinic there. And from my perspective, in those days, I was in charge of the home, of the healthcare for the homeless program, and it was how to get individuals into that clinic when healthcare was not their first priority. So by, by capturing them in the one-stop and saying, "Okay, you're here for food stamps? When was the last time you're here for, for medical? Do you have a regular medical physician? Do you have medications that you're supposed to be taking?" So in that way, we began funneling them into the healthcare system. ACE was a tremendous assistance to us. And getting them onto benefits was that first huge leap. Now we've got Medi-Cal, and the majority of our people are eligible for Medi-Cal. So we've got the enrollment people from the county coming in and actually enrolling them, that first step into the Medi-Cal process. Three years after the start of the Ventura program, we moved into the Oxnard program. And we operated and are currently operating out of the Community Action Building. Again, it's a slightly different environment, slightly different population, all with the same needs. And I should stress here that while we're targeting the homeless, this is not open to just the homeless. It's open to any community member that has a need to be connected to services. And we try not to refer them out to another location. We found that we have difficulty when that happens. There is a tendency not to follow through, whether that's because of health, or transportation, or just an inability to follow through. We tend to lose them if they step outside of that room before we complete processes. Three and a half years after the start of Oxnard now, we have moved into the Simi Valley and Thousand Oaks area. So Simi Valley is sponsoring us out of the Sierra Vista location, and Thousand Oaks is sponsoring us out of the Conejo Medical Clinic. It's a slow go right now. We're only into our second week, and we need to get the word out there. But the, the fact is that we need to develop the volunteer base. We need to develop the client base that, that then gives the information out to the community and says, "This is a safe spot." A couple of statistics, over the last six and a half years, just in Ventura and Oxnard, we've had over 27,000 visits. We've provided over 37,000 meals through the goodness of Our Lady of Assumption Church in Ventura and through the Rescue Mission in Oxnard. We've assessed clients for self-sufficiency, including their proximity and their ability to be accepted back into the family, into the community, their employment needs, their education needs, whether they have legal problems, whether they have medical problems or mental health problems, or whether they are having difficulty either reconnecting with children or dealing with children. We've assisted them in enrolling in food stamps, tested them for HIV, enrolled them, again, in the health benefits, Medi-Cal is what I had, had mentioned. We have a case management program, and we've just recently started what we're calling the reentry program, which is a table with two very, very able individuals who've worked in this field before to provide a weekly connection to those that have been disconnected by coming back out of the jail system or the prison system. This was supposed to be a moment of inspiration. I wanted to tell you what inspires me. There are simple acts of kindness. The policeman who said, "Oh darling, who's done this to you?" To a little old lady who, who really couldn't determine how to cross the street safely and had no place to go. To adult protective services that came in after 5:00 because it was more of a job. To our admitting physician and ER physician over at VCMC who saw a need, yes, it was social, but saw a need for, for appropriate placement. To the volunteer who went home and brought back scrubs for a newly-employed medical assistant. For a guest who picked up a cane that had been dropped by an individual who needed that cane. By a guest who obtained a lunch on behalf of a wheelchair-bound individual. These are the people that on a day-to-day basis inspire me. And it inspires our volunteers. It inspires our students that come in to, to see what we're all about. And I hope it inspires the rest of the community. Thank you.
Kate, your actions inspire us. Thank, thank, thank you very much. And board members, Kate has also served us for a long time in the Behavioral Health Advisory Board, and we have an agenda item, we're, we're accepting the resignation of a couple of people from boards, including Kate will be leaving that board. Her duties of trying to do one-stop all over the county is really commendable, and it's great that it's going. And board members who are, who are now getting one-stop in your communities, it is an inspirational thing to go over and just watch. And once those things get up and running and, and stuff, you'll find them as, as great assets. And they're a great place, I don't know how many times I'm out, I'm dealing with somebody, and I got one place I know I can send them. Hey, on Tuesday, go to the one-stop and you can get, and get help. And it's, it's exactly, I think you were exactly right when you said, make it the same place, same time, every week, so people can count on that in terms of getting it out there. So Kate, I'd like to come down and present a resolution to you in terms of thanking you for that, and we're going to try to get your picture also.
Thank you Kate for answering.
Okay, we're now at our consent agenda, and I would like to, item 22, just make a comment about it before we approve the consent calendar, and that is just, item 22 is where we have the joint agreement with Los Angeles County and Ventura County to both transport each other's inmates, whichever one is, it's just, and that's just the kind of common sense collaboration that makes government work well, and I want to applaud both Ventura County's Sheriff's Department and Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department for the collaboration.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to share, you know, just two words on 22.
Yeah, go ahead Supervisor Zaragoza.
Are you done with 21 or?
Yes, I'm done with 21.
No, I just, I just wanted to thank Renee, you know, from the, from DNA grants, you know, she's doing one heck of a good job over for the solving the crimes, you know, and cold cases and so forth. And I know she's here this morning, and I've had the opportunity to go over and visit her shop, and it's, if you watch CSIN TV, you gotta go watch her lab, you know, and see, that's an excellent job, and I just wanted to commend her for, for being here today. And that's for item, item 22. And thank you Renee and your staff. Thank you so much.
All right, so we have a motion, and we have a second for the consent calendar. No other comments, we'll vote. And that motion passes. We're now at public comments. Do we have any public speaker cards? All righty, excellent. Deborah Pendry. Our inspiration from Ojai.
I don't know, after these last two Tuesdays, man. Mine was kinda, wow. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down Deborah.
Thank you. Deborah Pendry, representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. First, I would just want to recognize and express an appreciation for the Phase Two of the Government Center Parking Lot Green Streets Urban Retrofit. That's just really exciting to see that happening. We've been keeping an eye on all your turf grass for a long time, and so this change is really great, and it benefits all of us as individuals and organizations and entities when we set examples and model for others around us. So thank you for that. I also want to recognize Supervisor Bennett, who obviously, as we know, represents the Ojai Valley. Back early in the year, he came on a Sunday to sit on a panel and for an event we called Facing the Drought Together. Appreciate that. And this coming Sunday, he's doing the same thing at the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa, June 22nd. That event is called The Future of Water. So thank you for that. Really appreciate you taking the time on a Sunday especially to do that. Now, when I was looking at the slideshow of the Green Street retrofit, one of them caught my eye, and I know you can't really see it, but it's a pretty good suburban, urban sprawl. I think it's Camarillo Springs area. And it just brought to mind a email I got several weeks ago from Jim Hines. He represents, he's a field representative for the Sierra Club Los Padres chapter. And I kept that email because there was something about it that just was resonating with me, and this picture kind of brought it to mind, and I just want to share this with you because it's food for thought, I think, for all of us. And I haven't checked Mr. Hines' statements, but I would hope as a field representative for the Sierra Club, he's crossing his Ts and dotting his Is on his numbers here. And he shares, "We are in a natural cycle of nature which we call a drought. What does this really mean? While our natural world on its own survives these droughts which occur frequently in arid Southern California, many of our elected and appointed government officials are using this drought for the sole purpose of weakening or completely doing away with important environmental projections. It is totally unfair to average citizens who are asked to remove our green lawns, use only certain types of plants in their landscaping, then at the same time, thousands, yes, thousands, of building permits are being approved in our region, and many of those projects are being constructed as I write this. They get water, you don't." Then he lists, City of Ventura East End, 500-plus dwellings. Camarillo Springville Track, 2,500-plus dwellings. Paradiso de Mayor Project, Gaviota Coats, approved by Santa Barbara officials, no number there. New Hall Ranch, which is at the Los Angeles-Ventura County Line, 25,000-plus dwellings. Tejon Ranch, which is at the Los Angeles-Kern Counties Lines, largest outlet mall ever built in California, now under construction. Completion due in early 2015. It has two housing developments around it, Tejon Village and Centennial, with close to 80,000-plus dwelling units. Local water agencies are seeking to dry up entire ecosystems and important wildlife habitat by seeking relief from enforcement of the Federal Endangered Species Act, which requires that water in a natural environment, creek, river, estuary, watershed, and wetland, be allowed to stay there to keep the ecosystem intact and prevent species dependent on that ecosystem from going extinct. Our governor has exempted certain water-related projects from required environmental review, and even the US Congress is trying to use the California drought as an excuse to dam wild and scenic rivers in California and other wasteful environmentally damaged projects. It is so important for those of us in the environmental community to keep our focus on what's being done to destroy our environment and the laws we have used for years to protect it, and defend those laws during this time of drought, which is being used as an excuse created by politicians for the gain of water development interests at the expense of our environment." Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come down Deborah. Our next speaker is Roger Campbell.
All right Kathy. Chairman, board members and executive director, I came here one year ago today, was the last time I came in front of you. I made you a little nervous, I think, when I first started talking, and I'm not going to do that today. I just got finished with the California, California Honey Harvest Festival and Barbecue Championship that's sanctioned by the Kansas City Barbecue Society. And I came here today to tell you again, because it's not done often enough, I do not believe, that the Environmental Health Department that I dealt with, Sue and Holly, were wonderful. They did a great job for us. They explained all the issues again, and Holly came out, or Holly was the one that took all my applications, Sue came out and did the inspections of the, of the vendors. She couldn't have been more helpful. And she didn't bend any rules, she did everything like was supposed to be done, and the vendors all, you know, supported what she was doing. I just wanted you guys to know, because I know you don't hear it often enough, your Environmental Health Department's a good department. I think they're overworked frankly, and I think probably you could do something with that, because if you check, I don't remember the numbers, but there's something like 300 and some festivals a year in this county. There's a bunch of them in Fillmore. They need some help. I, I, they didn't ask me to do this, I'm just telling you from what I, what I see over the last month and a half of dealing with them, they're overwhelmed. And one of the things I'm concerned about, this is the only concern I'm going to tell you about, is that next year, or after the first of this next fiscal year, next month, we as organizers have got to get in one month beforehand with all of our applications for all of our vendors to get in so we can have vendors at our organizations. I can tell you that from my limited experience in the, in the organizational events that I've done, vendors aren't that organized. And I had vendors coming in to me two weeks before, and I told everybody last year, "You have to get in before that. I have to have you in three weeks or a month." Well, I brought one in exactly two weeks before the event to Holly, and she took it because it was, I was on time, but all the rest of them were like three days before that. So that's it. I know that's an issue for them, they need some more time to get everything organized and get things done, but for the events, I think it's problematic what you guys or they have decided to do. I would really like to ask if, think about as you're looking at your devices, or you're looking at your departments that you're, think about that. And we do have a lot of festivals, we need to be customer-friendly, and they are, absolutely. But it's real difficult to get everybody lined up one month in advance because there's always stragglers, and the vendors are what make the money for the nonprofits that we're working for. All right, thank you again. You have a great department in the Environmental Health, and they do a fantastic job, in particular Holly and, and Sue.
Thanks for the input about the timeframe and for taking the time to come and compliment the Environmental Health Department. We appreciate, we appreciate both.
My pleasure. Felt like I had to do it.
Great.
Yeah, and let me just say that when you're coming saying they're under this pressure and they're still doing a great job, just shows the quality of who they are.
That's exactly it.
Yeah, that's true. Thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks again.
We have no other public speakers? We're at board comments and Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yeah, thank you Mr. Chair, and I'd like to adjourn in memory of those folks on this list. And I'd like to share too that this last week, Doris from my staff went and, let me
I'm not sure what you said.
Can you believe this?
I'm not sure what you said there.
Sorry. Anyway, she attended the 60th anniversary for the Boys and Girls Club over in Oxnard, and we are going to bring him over to, to the board last week. Additionally, Tracy and I attended the Filipino Independence Day over in downtown Oxnard. You know, they have the annual Independence Day flag raising, and it was attended by quite a few people. What I have this morning, Mr. Chair and board members, is I've been working with the Ventura County firefighters on coming up with a safer community, coming out with a safer community. And as a result of that, we ended up with a, a couple of PSAs that I'd like to share this morning with you. And the PSAs has to do with pool safety since the children are at a school. The summer's going to be starting this, this weekend, in fact, it's almost here with us. And I'm going to have the PSA that I'd like to share with you, and also another PSA, or public service announcement for an escape plan on fires, you know, how to get your, your families out of a home safely. And this is in conjunction with the Listos Program members I was sharing. Listos means get ready. We did six sessions over in Oxnard in Spanish on safety and earthquake prep and fire prep and so forth. And, and also we did it in Spanish, and also we had a Mesteco person that did it in Mesteco and in English. And, and also we, I have two, three other spots that we did for the radio. And what I like to do right now at this time is show a couple of those, there's a 30-second PSA so far. Our folks upstairs can give us, start off those videos.
Thinking about cooling off in the pool this summer? Before you jump in, here's some things you should know. Take a water safety class and learn CPR. Install a fence separating your pool from the house and play yard. Have a phone close by in case of an emergency. And never leave children unattended. Swim rings, floaties, and other inflatable toys are not life jackets and should never take the place of adult supervision. I'm Supervisor John Zaragoza. Follow your county firefighters' pool safety tips and have a safe and enjoyable summer.
That's one of them. Then we have another. I think we have one more.
If a fire broke out in your home, are you prepared to get your family out? Smoke detectors are your first line of defense. Having and practicing an escape plan could be the difference between life and death for your family. Our firefighters respond to tragedies every day.
I'm County Supervisor John Zaragoza. Our county firefighters want to remind you to have an escape plan. Don't get caught with no way out.
I just wanted to show those, we also have audios, you know, for, for radio I just wanted to show those, we also have audios, you know, for radio stations, and if you want to share them with your neighborhoods or, and I know Supervisor Bennett represents almost all of North Oxnard and Catholic long South Oxnard and get the center part, but it's available for any district or, we are also going to share that with the local radio stations, and I understand that we have our CEO's office. CEO Office is helping us out, and also the EOC is going to be helping us out, and also the ACA Department is going to help us out with this PSA. And if we want to use them, they're available. And I just want to thank the Oxnard Firefighters for doing this, to come out with a safer community, and also the Oxnard Firefighters for helping out with the Listos Program. Listos again meaning get ready for a disaster, and I just, I just wanted to share that with you that it's available and hopefully help the community. And thank you.
You have adjourned memories or anything else?
And I did. I adjourned in memory of those folks.
All right. Suvezer Foy.
Yeah, no, I have no adjourned memories, and I just want to say that last week was the Flag Day. As we all know, in 1777, our flag was adopted. It's a good day. No other comments.
Great.
Quick and easy. We've got a lot to do today.
Suvezer Long.
Yes, good morning. Thank you. I too have a short list to present, to adjourn in memory of and to acknowledge that those folks lost to the community. And I think that's really all I'm going to say this morning. I thought our budget process and adoption last night went very well, and I don't know that I thanked the CEO, so I would like to do that this morning and say it was certainly both leadership, but trust and confidence with the management team that got us to a very solid, good budget. So thank you.
Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. I was able to attend a couple of sessions because we needed to, to interview all the applicants who want to be on the Community Leadership Committee that oversees the Mental Health Services Act. The Behavioral Health Department put an advertisement in the papers, and we got dozens of people who wanted to be on that board. So it's just nice to see that people want to volunteer, people want to get involved in advertising work. So it's good to know that we can get participation out there. And it is a difficult decision when you've got so many, but it was really nice to see and also to get that input from people. I also attended a Flag Day ceremony at the Civic Arts Plaza in Thousand Oaks, put on by the Eric Hubert VFW post, and it was one of the biggest ones that they've had yet. And I just really congratulate them in bringing out particularly the youth to get some patriotism in them. I also attended a city council meeting to say goodbye to Mick Ferris, who had also served on our counties, a couple of boards in our counties, including the Tobacco Allocation Committee, a good guy going off to New York. And I know today the city is, City of Thousand Oaks is having a golden anniversary tree planting and dedication rep, as part of their 50-year anniversary. And I know that there's actually a few cities in our district that are all having that 50-year anniversary, so a lot of stuff must have been going on 50 years ago to stimulate all that. Let's see, and then I just want to call out how I think fortunate we are to live in the size of communities that we live in, where I feel our Sheriff's Department, our police departments can stay on top of crime. And just seeing each week these different press releases of them catching the bad guys, and it is really impressive. And just this one week, and within a couple of days, they were able to actually find an individual who was a sexual battery suspect at the MovieCo Theater bathrooms. But to be able to find him, they put out information into the media and were able to get some leads and then find evidence and actually arrest that individual, as well as another attempted murder suspect. Someone had seen, was a witness to watching some car burglaries and had been shot at for being a witness, and, but they were able to put a perimeter around and also catch the criminals. So it's just, it's nice to see, I think, that this kind of stuff probably happens in LA, and they aren't able to catch these folks. So I'm just really impressed at how effective our law enforcement is. And that's my kudos for the day, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask the Board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. This past week was graduation week for thousands of young people in Ventura County, and sort of the cycle of life continues here. And got to talk to Rosa coming up on the elevator about her daughter entering into the Junior Lifeguard Program and how, how much of sense of community there is here in Ventura County that she felt just didn't exist in other places in Southern California. So we're all fortunate to live here and hope everybody has a great, safe summer with all those kids out. With that, I'll cut the rest of my comments short because I'd like to get our regular non-scheduled items done. We have a 9:30 time certain. That will probably not go all the way till 10:00, so if we don't get one of them done, we will get the others done. The goal is to get them all done before 10:00, if that helps our department. So Healthcare Agency Behavioral Health. We have Melanie Roy coming up. Good morning, Melanie.
Good morning, Chair Bennett, members of the Board, Mike Powers, CEO. I am before you today with item number 41, which is a letter that requests your approval for the Behavioral Health Department to enter into an agreement with, sign an MOU with the Selpa Ventura County Office of Education. And this is related to the former 3632 services that we provide under contract with VCOE and Selpa. This was an MOU that we have combined now with an interagency agreement. We used to have two documents, and what we've done is combine both documents now for better efficiencies. And one document kind of outlines the agreement related to the payment for the services, and the other document is more operational, outlines all of the various duties associated with those services. The projected annual cost for the agreement is approximately $6.5 million. And of that $6.5 million, $5 million is funded by the school districts. The other money has come from Medi-Cal and EPSTT. And we're also asking that the agreement may be extended by mutual written consent for additional two years if all other items in the MOU remain the same. And we're also, the school districts are also looking for an expansion of services, and that would allow us to fund the hiring of seven clinicians and two office assistants, and that expansion would take place in the Santa Clara Valley, in Santa Paula, Fillmore, and Piru, and also in Ojai. So if you have any questions, I'd answer them.
Thank you very much. Just a quick question. What kind of feedback are we getting from the schools in terms of the program? Are the schools feeling comfortable with the program?
Sure, yeah. And I think, as you know, schools would have a choice to contract really with anybody to provide these mental health services, and the schools have chosen to contract with county mental health. So that's really, I think, a testimony to our really longstanding partnership.
Good. All right. Ready for a motion? Been moved and seconded?
Nice seeing the collaboration.
We're ready to vote. And that passes?
Thank you.
Or, thank you very much, Ms. and Ms. Roy. Item 42, County Executive Office, California Department of Water Resources Drought Proposition 84. Good morning, Sue.
Good morning, Chair Bennett, members of the Board. Mr. Powers for the record, Sue Hughes with the County Executive Office. Before you today with another grant application that we'd like to submit, the passage of, well, once the governor declared a drought emergency, the legislature passed an emergency drought bill, SB 104, that allocated $200 million statewide for emergency drought projects. This time's a little different, this go-around. We have total 50 days to put in this application. We normally have somewhere between five and six months to do these applications. So this one's kind of on a fast track. But just to remind the Board that thanks to your support and always being the group that accepts these grants on behalf of the Watersheds Coalition, we've successfully brought in $62 million for implementation and planning. The implementation projects, that $62 million represents 25 projects across the county. This application represents seven projects across the county. Two of them are actually projects that will be manned by county departments, one watershed protection district. One of them out in El Rio is much like the project that's being done here on the campus, the stormwater retrofit. And the other project is an ag project with a number of stakeholders, but the watershed protection district will be the lead on the application. Then again, there's the salinity management pipeline, there's a Camrosa project, so we again encompass the entire county geographically. For this approximately $10 million grant, we're still in the middle of working on getting all the numbers straight. So that's what this number 42 is about.
All right. Good. Questions or ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'll move the recommended action as was said by Ms. Hughes. Lots of coordination and collaboration, and frankly, trust by the parties now that they've worked together long enough and been successful that, to move ahead on this. So good work.
Thank you.
Sue, and I think that El Rio Stormwater Retrofit is going to help us with the flooding also, and also to, to help with the water retention.
Twofold. It'll be when it rains and when it doesn't rain.
That's right.
I might point out that at Fox Canyon, we're talking about a replenishment fee to start raising money, and this is certainly been the most effective way for new money to come in. Not all for new sources, which is what they want the replenishment fee to be for, but still certainly, certainly very beneficial to the water equation here in Ventura County. So congratulations.
I think I'd like to note that when you look at the county, the entire West County obviously is reliant on groundwater, aquifers. The East County is pretty much all on imported water. And through this drought, we know that the amount of imported water is going to be cut and is being cut, that it is also critical out there to look at projects. And I would hope that in the future that we could start looking at some East County projects too, particularly in this, in drought-related aspects. And I really like the fact that, you know, as I look at the different projects, that a lot of them are looking at an evaluation of how we can be better at irrigating and things like that, that could be applied to the East County. But in the long run, I think, you know, we need some better plans in place in the event that we, an area that's solely, you know, dependent on imported water has some plans in place. I know the City of Thousand Oaks right now is looking at ways that they can start capturing some rainwater as one potential or using aquifer water, but it is turning to a whole kind of paradigm shift now that we have to start looking at other sources, and funds like this would be helpful.
All right. We have a motion and a second. And we're voting on that, and that item passes. We're at item 43, Resolution Recognizing the Regional Impacts of the 2014 Statewide Drought.
I'm up for a little bit here. I have a few in a row.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, Ms. Hughes.
You're going to hear 43, 44, and 45 together.
Oh, I thought I was going to hear 44, 45, and 46 together.
I'm sorry, you're correct.
Boy, do I feel really like somebody, somebody had their coffee this morning. That's right. There we go.
I think we brought dessert last night.
That's right. If we would have had dessert last night, that's right. All right. Item 43, Ms. Hughes.
Okay, item number 43 is a resolution that we will put forward with the application that we just talked about, with our grant application, recognizing that there are regional impacts that affect us with the drought declaration. So this resolution will accompany the grant application. And as noted in the Board Letter, there are a number of agencies, Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency, Cuyahoga Municipal Water District, and United that have taken steps to acknowledge that we are in fact in a drought condition. So this complements their action and is attached with our grant application.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. We sort of, sort of our drought emergency declaration, you could say, here for Ventura Nothing novel about that. Everybody's doing it. All right. Item 44, 45, and 46, we'll do all of, three of these together. Will you be doing staff report on 44?
Yes. So I'm going to do them for all three of them, even though I have representatives in the audience that...
And we do have one public speaker, Board Members.
Okay. So as you recall, way back in 2006, your Board adopted what was then the first WCVC, Integrated Regional Water Management Plan. And that was a requirement out of Prop 50. In order to be eligible for funding, you had to write a plan. Well, with the passage in 2006 of Proposition 84, they realized that there were some other things that probably should have been included in a plan, once we all sort of figured out what we were doing, including the state. So the statute in Prop 84 said that you would update your previous plan, in our case, 2006 plan, you'd update your plan in order, in simple terms, to be eligible for Proposition 84 funding. So we, along with our stakeholders, we applied for a planning grant, received a planning grant of $1 million. Part of that $1 million went to pay for writing the plan, but then there were three other special studies that we did, so it didn't take $1 million to do the plan by any means. But we also used as our match contributions that came from our stakeholders, the cities, the special districts, the water districts, that all helped pay to put this together. And I'm really disappointed that Lynn Rodriguez, who is the person who actually wrote the plan, is on a much-deserved vacation with her family this week, so she, she won't be back in the office until tomorrow, so she's missing out completely. But I know she'll just be really pleased to have this adopted. So this adoption is for the Board of Supervisors on behalf of the county as a whole to adopt. And then item number 45 is adopting on behalf of the Watershed Protection District, and 46 is adopting on behalf of all the Water Works districts. And then on Thursday, we meet, the Watersheds Coalition of Ventura County meets on Thursday as the general membership, and they will also be adopting the plan. The requirement in Prop 84 is if you are a project proponent, you must adopt the IRW on plan as it's been updated. So we'll be making the rounds to meet with all the cities and anybody who's had, all the water districts, any sand districts, anybody who's had a project, to do a presentation to get them to adopt the plan. And if you're not busy on Thursday morning at 7:15, we'll be at the Association of Water Agencies meeting, thank you Supervisor Zaragoza for that, to give a brief overview of the plan, what we've done, and to ask them to be ready for us to come to them with adoption.
Great.
And we'll be there to support you.
Thank you.
Sue, do you have other staff in terms of presentations here, or do we go to the public speaker?
You can go to public speaking, I believe.
You don't have anybody else? All right. Mr. Gromlich from Cuyahoga.
Good morning, Henry.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Bennett, members of the Board. For the record, my name is Henry Gromlich with Cuyahoga Municipal Water District. I'm also co-chair of the Cuyahoga Creek Watershed Management Plan Steering Committee and on the Steering Committee for the Watersheds Coalition of Ventura County. And I'm here today to thank your Board for your support for integrated planning and your generous dedication of Sue Hughes as a resource to help us coordinate county-wide and also to echo her appreciation of Lynn Rodriguez's role in bringing this all together. It's a wonderful thing, and it is really helping to increase water resources and water reliability in Ventura County. And for that, you have Cuyahoga's thanks and our Watersheds' thanks.
Thanks for taking the time to come down today on this and for your cooperation with the whole program of Cuyahoga. Supervisor Long.
Thank you. And thank you for coming in to speak because it, it really is a partnership with all of the watersheds, and it really does require everyone to sit around the table and make sure we continue to not recreate the silos of many years ago, but work together. And it is the coalition effort that does that. And it really has positioned us well, as you know. The big dog, south of us in LA, they, we, we're in the same, in many respects, in many areas, the same competitive field, and we have, we have stood our ground and done very well. So it's been great work by everyone. Thank you.
All right. Can we do one motion on this? Do we have to do three motions? One motion?
One.
All right. So we have one motion for item 43, 44, and 45.
44, 45.
45, 45. There we go.
Where did he hear that?
We're one and one here, right? We'll have a shootout after the end of this.
There you go. You got it done.
Sue, are you still looking for that commission on that?
It's only...
I did just want to recognize Sue and Lynn on this Watershed Coalition. It's amazing, with the competing interests of all the water interested, that we don't hear concerns coming to your Board, and that they continue to monitor actually the implementation and construction of these. and construction of these, these huge projects. It's really remarkable. So, great job to you and your team.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue. We're at item 47. Supervisor along.
Yes, thank you. I'd ask that the board support the recommended action to appoint Hector Sanchez. He is a born and raised Piru father, family member, active in the community, just excited about serving to really help Piru get more services, more activities for the Piru youth. He'll be a great addition to the Piru Local Recreation Advisory Commission.
It's been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. All right, why don't we do the correspondence agenda since we have about two minutes before we do that? Motion on item 48, correspondence agenda.
There we go.
There we go.
You made up the last one, you guys.
And, there we go.
We've got a minute.
Then let's, all right, yeah, go ahead. You've got one minute to go to the restroom. And we'll be at item 49.
I'm going to do 40.
One minute. Just... All right. Ready? All right, we'll come back into session for 9:30 report regarding the county's participation in the federal Department of Health and Human Services and Department of Defense Shelter Project at the Navy Base. And we'll start with Mr. Zimmerman, followed by Barry Fisher, and then Joan Arajo. This is just a receive and file, board members.
Yeah. Good morning, Chair Bennett, members of the board, Mr. Powers. For the record, I'm Barry Zimmerman, Director of the Human Services Agency, and here to report out, as we know that there's a shelter out at Port Weneme Naval Base dealing with children from the ages of 13 to 17 years old. I'm going to leave the details to the healthcare agency and just kind of clarify and tell our role associated with it, because it is a little bit confusing, and I think some in the public don't, our understanding actually, our involvement associated with the shelter. The shelter currently is under federal jurisdiction. It's run by the Federal Health and Human Services Agency through a contract. Southwest Key Program is the organization running it. These children, due to their, their status, their immigration status, and the, the situation that they're in, of which jurisdiction, we do not have necessarily full jurisdiction over these cases as far as complaints of treatment. However, we are concerned about their treatment and did go visit the facility with the healthcare agency to assure that the environment there was appropriate for, that there were beds, adequate care, food, shelter, recreation, and, and those type things that would be appropriate for a shelter. And all that was in place when we went and visited them there. We have received referrals, and we do receive referrals from the, the facility as appropriate, because the counselors who are working with these children do come across situations of disclosure of abuse and neglect that may have occurred, and by law, they're required to report that, of which they do to report that to us. The majority of those situations are remedied issues that occurred in their country of origin and not associated with the facility or the treatment of the children within the facility. And so, those are handled appropriately there. As far as our jurisdiction, we do respond to abuse and neglect cases on the base. That is our, our jurisdiction, if you, if you will. In the shelter, it's a little bit different. We will get those referrals, and they would be cross-reported to law enforcement, since it is not a dependency or a 300 case. It would become a criminal case at that point in time, due to the nature of, we deal with families and relatives, and this would be a shelter case that would be referred in that regard. However, the jurisdiction of placement, safety plans, and so forth are under the federal government's jurisdiction, of which we are basically made aware of those situations, but don't have direct jurisdiction to involve ourselves with the facility directly in that regard. So, I just wanted to make that as a clarifying of our role. We're associated, but not necessarily the primary jurisdiction to handle these type cases in, under this scenario that we have here. And I know Jones and Barry are going to go over much more detail of the actual operation. So, if you have any questions for me in that, I'd be more than happy to entertain them.
Board members, any questions for Barry?
This...
Supervisor along.
I'm not sure that, the article in the paper today about folks who really want to help and want to give particularly clothes, and do we have a role there? I know certainly in our homeless programs and our, we welcome that. And I understand there's this great firewall, somewhat of a firewall, on this, but...
Yeah, I, I mean, we, we've been hearing that, and we can talk to the facility, the program manager in charge, as far as, I know they're not in position of receipt of donations at this point in time and are not receiving those. I don't know the rationale behind that, but that's been the report back that we've had thus far.
That's a shame.
Mr. Chair, I had, Barry, I've had some calls too from individuals that want to help, you know, in the health and mental and with, and also with food and some kind of shelter, but I think you answered the question that we don't have any of the responsibility, or how do we, who do we contact?
We don't have direct jurisdiction over that in, in those cases. However, there is, you know, the, the program that is contracted from the Health and Human Services, you know, it's really up to them to choose on their involvement. Now, I know we'll go over healthcare that is deeply involved in the health and welfare of the children by request and by our helping there, which is appropriate, and they have contracted throughout the community for providers. So, it's just working with them and encouraging that connection is what we could play that role.
With the Federal Department of Health and...
With this contractor, Southwest.
A contractor.
Yeah.
Sure is a lot.
So, back to that question then, Southwest Key, are they, are they, they're the overall contractor?
They're the contractor under the Health and Human Services.
Right. So, if folks are interested in donations or something, they could contact them. Is that what you're saying?
And that's who they have been contacting, and we, we confirmed that yesterday also, that they did not accept, they are not accepting donations at this time.
Yeah. I, I expect that is difficult, because we still have this location on a military base and all the other issues that come with that, but...
There are logistical issues getting associated with them. The time period is supposed to be very short.
Right.
You know, we've already had 70-some children already placed with relatives in this short, and they've been up a week and a half at this point, so...
I was also wondering, I got a very generous offer from someone who wanted to take El Salvadoran immigrant children into their home until they can, you know, find a permanent place. So, I mean, people are offering and being very generous in this, and when I, reading, it says that these children are only the ones that will have, have been a family member or a sponsor in the United States, and that's why they're at the naval base.
That's correct. These children are what they call Category 1 and 2 children. Their health, they do not have any serious health concerns, and they already have an identified relative or sponsor prior to coming to Port Weneme. And so, this is kind of a transition shelter in that regard, to make the final preparations and the final connectivity with the families, and then they, they are then united with them. So, it's not like a long-term housing situation that you would need to, to house individuals for a long period of time to do a relative search or an appropriate placement at that point. If, if failure occurs, as far as I understand in talking to them, failure occurs, that they would like them there no longer than 21 days, but really 14 days is their, their window that they're working under to, to transition them to a family. If that's not going to occur, this contractor does have group homes that, that are located, and they'll put them in a longer-term facility in that regard. So, that's kind of the operations, that's how they're contracted to do the work with the federal government.
And, you know, obviously, like you said, this is being run by the federal government.
Yes.
And, and reading reports of these children having, you know, traveled 1,000 miles, some have been raped and robbed and battered, and, you know, just kind of, you know, very, it sounds like many could be traumatized. And I'm just wondering, again, understanding we don't have oversight, but is there any check of the sponsors and people who they will be turning the children over to?
Well, they do have a protocol in validating who they are, and, and they kind of go through an extensive background, not a complete background check, but to identify that the, who they say they're going to is a relative, is associated with them. They do a check on the, as best they can, the country of origin, where they come from, who, who has been identified, and then they do, do check them in the United States as well. So, they, they do have some connectivity there. They, they do have mental health providers and counselors that are working with the children in a trauma-informed manner, recognizing, yes, many have been traumatized and have gone through some harsh circumstances to get to this point.
I think you have a PowerPoint, is that right?
Yeah, they'll, they'll go into much more detail on that. I told Joan I wouldn't...
Barry, can I, one more question. How many days can they stay here in Ventura County base?
The program is targeted 21 days.
21 days.
That's the information I have.
All righty, great. Barry Fisher?
Good morning, Chair Bennett, board members, Mr. Powers, Barry Fisher, Healthcare Agency. I'm going to kind of pave the way for Joan Arajo to take over. This started some time ago, at least with me, with a early morning phone call from Mr. Powers, asking if I read the paper yet. Luckily, I had. And encouraged me to reach out to the Navy Base and see if we can provide assistance as a county. I did reach out to Captain Valesquez, and the first thing out of his mouth was, "That's why I love Ventura County." And I said, "Why? You guys are always the first ones to reach out to us and offer up services." So, that was great to hear, and wanted to pass that on to you. Wanted to thank Joan Arajo, Renee Higgins, Melanie Roy for bridging the gap with Behavioral Health Services for the base, and especially Dr. Ramsey Ulrich, who you were here from, who literally worked night and day, mostly at night, sometimes well into 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, working on an agreement to ensure that the children on the base receive high-quality medical care. So, I'll turn it over to Joan.
Good morning, Joan.
Good morning. Chair Bennett, Supervisors, Mr. Powers. I'm Joan Arajo, Deputy Director for the Healthcare Agency. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share with you the story of the Central American children immigrating to the United States. Let's see, if I can get this right. As Barry Zimmerman mentioned, this immigration is by and large due to gangs and violence and poverty. And the children are immigrating in unprecedented numbers. They're generally unaccompanied, and they are coming from Honduras, which is in the central part of the map in orange, El Salvador, which is just below that in purple, and Guatemala, which is in between, just below Mexico in green. This is from the closest point to Texas is 2,000 miles. Oop, let's go that way. The children have been documented down to one years old. Initially, we were told three, but now there's little tiny ones. They're traveling without any steady source of food or water. However, the children that'll be housed at Port Weneme are only 13 to 17-year-olds. They're trying to do it in age groups in different locations, so the activities can be tailored to the, to the age group. These journeys have been known to last anywhere from four to six months, on rare occasion, when the kids have been able to travel on top of trains for extended lengths. It can be about a two-week journey. Since I learned of this humanitarian crisis, a couple of weeks ago, I have seen it in the news every single day, and the number of children that are immigrating is staggering. The, the federal year starts, they're counting since October, and this year, they believe the numbers could reach upwards of 90,000 children. With such a sudden spike in children entering our country, we were not prepared for this. Initially, children were housed in very large shelters similar to warehouses in Texas, because we, we simply weren't prepared, and that's why other locations have been identified in such short order. Today, after a child enters the U.S., ICE, or the Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency, takes custody of the child, and the longest a minor can be with ICE is 72 hours. After that, they're turned over to the Department of Health and Human Services, where they do receive a physical exam, psychological evaluation, and a whole series of vaccines or immunizations. That's when the case management process begins to identify a parent or other relative throughout the United States that the child might have been traveling to meet up with. Initially, children were going to stay with the Department of Health and Human Services for eight days before being transported to a shelter like the one at the naval base. However, due to the number of children that have been arriving over the last couple of weeks, that stay with Health and Human Services is only three days. Initially, a shelter opened in Lackland, Texas. That opened on May 12th to house 1,200 children, and soon that was obvious, that was not going to be enough space. So, I'd like to share with you the rapid timeline that has gone on here in our county over the last two weeks. On Monday, June 2nd, the Department of Health and Human Services came and visited a formal, former CB deployment center on the base. On Tuesday, June 3rd, the decision was to formalize that as a shelter for these children. Southwest Key, the federal contractor that works with the Department of Health and Human Services, started arriving on Tuesday and Wednesday, the 3rd and 4th of June. And as Barry mentioned, our participation came with that phone call from Mike early morning to Barry, and the ball got rolling from there. That's classic Mike fashion. It all goes from there. Dr. Levin, our Public Health Director, quickly became involved and got a briefing on the shelter and the needs, and he pulled the rest of HCA in quickly. On Thursday, the 5th, we were able to go out and tour the facility while it was being set up. Now, you have to remember, on Tuesday, it was an empty shelter with metal, metal cots, and that was it, nothing else, not a fire extinguisher, nothing. And they readied that facility for 100 children to arrive Friday, June 6th. So, it was pretty amazing how quickly things moved forward. On the 5th, when we were there, the identified need was to, for us to provide either a physician or a mid-level provider, three hours a day, three days a week. But once those kids started arriving, which was about another 1,400-mile journey from Texas, the need quickly rose. So, we jumped in there that weekend. Yes, I did call Dr. Ulrich, sent him a text. He said he's never going to take a text from me again that says, "Hey, can you talk?" But Dr. Ulrich, I would like to note, is our medical director for our affiliated clinics, West Ventura Clinic, Fillmore, and Piru, and he does a fabulous job of that, so I thought, who better to engage? Over the weekend, we sort of mentally structured a system where we could engage, schedule, and deploy our medical providers. Dr. Ulrich started working immediately with Southwest Key on a contract between Southwest Key and his corporation. They had us visit again on, a week ago, Tuesday, June 10th. That morning, FEMA, Homeland Security, the Department of Defense, and the Navy had visited, and they upped the ante on the level of medical care that needed to be provided. It changed to four hours a day, seven days a week, with call 24/7. They had an immediate need for three children to be seen in an urgent care center. Those children were tran- Those children were transported to the West Ventura Urgent Care and Seen. We went to bed, got up the next morning, and the, the call for service rose again. Then, now they needed eight hours a day of care, plus 24/7 call access to our urgent cares, laboratory, x-ray, and hospital, hospital care if needed. And so, working quickly, they got Dr. Ulrich a contract on Thursday. A couple of fine details were clarified. It was signed on Friday, and we started providing care Saturday morning at 8:00 a.m. And so, I don't think you can put services in place faster than that. I do want to, I want you to remember that prior shelter photo that you saw. This is a picture actually of the girls dorm at the base. You can see it is clean, it is well organized. Each child is responsible for their own bunk and their belongings. They take great pride in it. I think they make their beds like I had to during nursing school, where the professor dropped the dime on the bed to see if it bounced. These beds were in order. The kids have a very structured schedule, from wake-up call at 5:45 in the morning till lights out at 9:30 at night. And it was pretty impressive, actually, when we went through and saw everything in They will be filled to capacity, 575, by the end of the week. The goal, as Barry Zimmerman mentioned, is that every child is placed within 21 days. That's not a guarantee. The medical side initially asked us to provide services for four months. Now they say indefinitely, and the contract was for a year. So we're, we're getting prepared for an unknown amount of time to fill the need, need as it presents itself. I do want to acknowledge Dr. Levin, because he has been out there, our Public Health Medical Director, assisting in case there would be an outbreak of any communicable diseases in close living quarters, particularly upper respiratory conditions, things like that. As Barry mentioned, Melanie has helped bridge services for behavioral health needs for the children. But most of all, I would like to introduce and acknowledge Dr. Ulrich.
Good morning, Dr. Ulrich. Appreciate you being here, Ramsey, and I just want to point out that Dr. Ulrich's attractive family is all back there, and I'm sure his, his wife and his children are proud of him in terms of the efforts he's made here. So, thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for inviting me here today, Mr. Powers, Supervisor Bennett, and the board. It's not that often that a humanitarian opportunity such as this comes to your own backyard, merely 20 minutes away at the naval base in Port Weneme. It has been exciting to mobilize and coordinate the physician staffing efforts to provide medical care for these immigrant children. The response from VCMC physicians, as has been alluded to, to assist was not only immediate, but also robust. This is testimony not only to the commitment to the underserved and disenfranchised to, of the VCMC medical staff members, but also their willingness to help out in a time of need. These doctors have rallied to work shifts, including weekends and evenings, all while having full-time jobs and families. As has been mentioned, within 24 hours of signing the agreement, we were able to staff doctors every day for the entire following week. We have Dr. Fran Larson here as we speak, actually. Five different physicians have worked for the last four days and are addressing a variety of medical conditions such as abdominal pain, asthma, skin infections, upper respiratory illnesses, nosebleeds, and there has been actually a case of chicken pox that was identified, and that child was removed to another facility to be in a solo room. I was honored to be asked by the Healthcare Agency leadership to participate in this effort to care for these children who have survived a perilous journey, as has been discussed, from many miles away. Lastly, I'm obligated also to thank my wife, who through her technology skills, has been tireless in creating our website and coordinating the physician's schedule. Thank you.
Do, do you have one question for you? I've asked a question of our staff, but I'd like to get your impression. I know you're, you're out there from a medical perspective, primarily their physical health. What, what's your assessment of the emotional state of the children at this point?
When Joan and I were there with Renee Higgins last week, the children were very well behaved. They were smiling, they were exercising, they were in line for food, they were in English classes, and, you know, they just looked like regular kids, actually. They looked fairly healthy. And so, their emotional state, to answer your question, seemed fine. They just look like happy kids. They're playing soccer. In fact, one of the injuries was an ankle sprain from a soccer match.
The advantage of youth is resiliency, so they can, they can, they can-
Mr. Chair?
-suffer and bounce back so quickly. Supervisor, ergo.
I, I just want to thank you, Doctor, and thank VCMC, and thank all the, the VCMC staff, Joan and Barry. You know, the kids are here not because they want to be. It's not their fault, you know, they, unfortunately, their, their government is not taking care of the children. But I just want to thank you for the humanitarian, this is a humanitarian crisis for, for the children, to come 2,000 miles, you know, crossing three or four different countries to get here, and it's just unbelievable, you know. But I just want to thank you for the good work that you're doing, and hopefully that they meet their relatives here in the, in the U.S. And, and as Barry mentioned, I think they'll be here for 21 days. And my understanding is that those children that are here do have American families that they're looking for. Is that, is that correct, Doctor?
My understanding from previous comments is correct, and that effort to reunify them is afoot.
And I do want to share too, with Joan and Barry, and Doctor, that people have called me, they want to help, and if probably we can get together with Southwest Key, you know, once that opportunity arises, maybe we can help those, those children too. But I just want to thank you for, for the help that you're, that you're doing to provide the health and well-being for those children. Supervisor.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate coming in, giving us this report, but more than anything, stepping up with the, your physician group and being willing to take this on. It's daunting, but we're, I think we're fortunate, one, that we have a system in place in this county with our clinic system and our, and our family of physicians and, and the partners who support them, that we were able to agree to take on the challenge of this, and, and it is truly humanitarian, and to thank you for assisting with just the coordination of, of how to keep those schedules moving. One point, I, I saw online that there was an, Southwest Key was, had an open job recruitment for quite a few physicians. Do you have a status on that, as to, are they still recruiting for folks to help with all of this throughout the nation and the other locations, I believe, but?
I believe they are. I will say that it would appear they are overwhelmed as well, and they're in the process of developing their own flow for patients and triage, setting up those that need to be seen by the physician on a given day. We are encountering security issues getting into the base. I have been told by the medical director that individuals are faking ID to get on for whatever reason, and it's creating issues with our own physicians to get on the base. We need to get ID badges for all physicians working shifts, including information that we generally don't like to share, such as social security numbers and so forth. So, right now, that is a big hurdle that I'm having to deal with. You know, yesterday, we had a physician who was waiting outside the gate because he didn't get an escort in and so forth. So, we have the doctors there, now we just need access to it.
I, I talked with Dr. Vasquez, Captain Vasquez, and I'm sure our CEO, we can-
That would be great.
He certainly said he's willing, he's there to, to help us make, you know, make it work.
That would be great, because sending social security numbers over the email-
Yeah.
-and then the receiving party cannot open a secure email. I mean, there's a myriad challenges that we're facing with that.
Could you tell us, how many physicians do, are, are part of this effort?
So far, there's 10. My wife probably has a more accurate. Well, okay, so 20. Dr. Levin actually just emailed our, just signed onto our site and emailed, he would like to do shifts out there, so we're, we're honored and pleased about that.
Well, I want to offer my appreciation also to you and everybody else, Joan and Barry and Barry, in terms of pulling this together. And then, thank you to Rachel also back there for, for your assistance with this too.
Let me just ask a question, Doctor. When you bring this many people together with different things like that, you saw chicken pox, you've seen some other stuff, what, what is your thoughts on disease? I guess got some calls from some people from the military, they've done this overseas before, and then all of a sudden, you start to see a lot of disease that comes up, and I guess you guys are right on it, so I'm glad to hear that. But, because we're also in a general population of 800, 900,000 people here locally around, so what's the thoughts on that kind of thing happening now? As you guys go in, people come out, the military's there, everybody's kind of excluded from that, but what is that thought?
So there, there is, that is a, an issue, and with this case of chicken pox, despite the children receiving a battery of vaccines at the border through, I believe, ICE, this one individual child was probably in the incubation period, I would gather, and so the vaccine, you know, was not effective. I will say that, from a physician perspective, we are there four to eight hours a day, depending on shifts that we can fill. Sanitary practices, hand hygiene and so forth are practiced, and as was mentioned, if there is a concern for a patient having a communicable disease, typhoid, chicken pox, et cetera, appropriate action, masks, et cetera, need to be addressed, and a higher level of care needs to be oftentimes sought, that is to say, in our urgent care or ER. And so, we've had several of those patients come through, and, you know, they come in with masks, with upper respiratory infections and so forth. So that, that is an issue. I mean, I'm very happy that Dr. Levin is involved. We are only there, again, for this, you know, finite amount of time. They have contracted nursing staff, I believe through Maxim, who are also staffing, and many of those nurses are actually VCMC nurses. And so, this is happening all very quickly, but we are quite attentive to those communicable diseases.
Do you believe we can control most of this, what we're hearing about, unless something gets out of hand?
I believe we can. You know, we have, we're in the midst of a pertussis or whooping cough epidemic, and so we are used to, you know, patients coming in with coughs, they're masked right away, as is our common practice in clinic and the hospital.
Good. Great. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like we got some fingers. Supervisor Parks?
Not really questions, comments, that I couldn't wait.
I just wanted, would recommend that we put something up on our website, on the front page, that, for donations, who to talk to if you're looking for employment opportunities. They have a full, yeah, on the front page.
We'll do that.
Kind of a, a status of where things are, and certainly the good people have stepped up to-
Right.
...assist.
Will do.
And just, you know, my overall comment, you know, it's pretty shocking to see the numbers and unaccompanied children coming over the border. And when we're talking about numbers going from 20 to 16, talking about over 100,000 of these kids coming, where they're closing down schools in Ecuador because there's so many kids that are leaving to come to the United States, and hearing about the traumatic travel that they go through in terms of, you know, being attacked and all, you just realize what a failed policy we have at the federal level and immigration reform that you have this situation occurring. But overall, it just, you know, putting these kids at the naval base isn't the right answer. And also, at a time when we're looking at some potential, very significant international concerns occurring, where we are doing some mobilizing, it's just, it seems so inappropriate. I appreciate that. Compared to the conditions in Texas that we saw on that slide, these certainly are better conditions, but I, you know, to me, something needs to be done. I think, you know, we need to write to the federal government, write to our Congress, write to the President. I mean, this should not, you know, this should not be occurring. This is not the appropriate solution in my mind.
Maybe a joint letter could, could do it, because I think that's important, you know, that we write, you know, to our legislators regarding this, this humanitarian issue. It's a crisis, you know.
I was not even aware of this until Joan's text on Friday last.
Okay. One last, the 140, projected 142,000, that would be nationwide, not Ventura County, right?
Sure.
That would be better clarified.
We don't, we don't know the number that will come here exactly, but those numbers are nationwide. But if children rotate through every week or two-
Okay.
-and they keep all 575 beds filled, we will, we will care for many thousands-
Quite a few.
...of children. Two quick points. This is the route to donate, and that's, that's available on the web. It's quite easy to navigate. There are still quite a number of jobs available, including teachers and other people to work in, in a lot of different capacities. One of the things that was so wonderful about our medical staff being a part of this, the requirement to participate is, has to be California licensed physicians or mid-levels, nurse practitioners, PAs. They also have to be credentialed through our medical staff, and so that's a vetting process that, you know, there's no criminal background, no activity, and that's one of the problems with volunteers. They don't have a way to screen people to make sure something inappropriate isn't going on, and because their primary focus is to protect the children. So unfortunately, that becomes an obstacle to people that are well-meaning. But I think that website would be quite useful.
Well, thank you very much. I want to try to pull this one to a close. We are at our 10 o'clock. Mr. Powers?
I just say, I don't want to mislead people. From what we're hearing, they don't want donations right now, so, you know, just to be aware that we can make them, and hopefully they will open the doors to them, but right now, from what I'm hearing, they're not accepting them, correct?
On the website, it lists some specific things they are looking for, for donations. So.
They're not accepting volunteers, they're accepting donations. That's my understanding, right? Mr. Powers?
Just real quick, thank you to the HCA and HSA teams, and Joan, and everybody, and really to recognize Dr. Ulrich's compassionate leadership. It's not a surprise, knowing him as I do, but for stepping up, and he's a busy guy. On top of it, he runs one of the busiest medical practices in the county with 55,000 visits alone, just at West Ventura for low-income patients. So, it's really extraordinary, he's just impeccable qualification, but his normally excellent judgment does not extend to his hobbies, because he's one of those kite surfers, so. But, an outstanding doctor, and we're lucky to have you.
And a thank you. And his family, too.
And just one last thing. Ask the CEO and Mr. Fisher to work to see if we can assist with Captain Vasquez on this glitch of getting folks through.
Right. We'll do that, and we'll work with Rachel as well, too.
We have a motion to receive and file in front of us. And that motion passes.
Thank you.
We're now, we're now at our 10 o'clock time certain. Supervisor Parks?
Here, you know, just hearing about the need for hundreds of physicians' assistance over there at the naval base, but at the same time, we have before us a group of young adults who have been giving their assistance to physicians and through the Westminster Free Clinic, and it's nice to see you all here this morning. The Westminster Free Clinic in Thousand Oaks is a private nonprofit healthcare provider for residents in the East County, and it's largely driven by the efforts of dedicated volunteer and healthcare professionals. The clinic serves a broad spectrum of public health and healthcare issues for uninsured people, including free patient care, prescriptions, resource and referral advocacy, free legal services, bilingual counseling, and dental screening services. This innovative service model includes the integration of student volunteers who work alongside healthcare professionals, which provides the students with invaluable training in the healthcare profession, and enables Westminster to continue serving the growing population of those in need of healthcare in our community. And it's noteworthy that many of these student volunteers do go on to careers in healthcare, and just the experience, I know, will help you get into some good colleges if that's where you're going, and, and whatever career you choose, it's just such a great experience. And I'm, I know that you're thankful to be able to be in the program. We're really thankful for your- And I know that you're thankful to be able to be in the program, we're really thankful for your contribution to the program, and so this morning, we wanted to present to you some certificates. I know we have your wonderful executive director there of Westminster Free Clinic, Lisa's here, and I believe you have a PowerPoint that you want to do, so come on up, and just, we so much appreciate your partnership with the county and helping those who couldn't otherwise get assistance, so it's just such a great organization, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you Chairman Bennett, CEO Michael Powers, and Supervisor Parks, and Supervisor Foy, and Supervisor Zeragoe, so we really appreciate your support and this opportunity to honor the students, thanks for inviting them today. And I thought I'd just give you a little overview, I think the question I get asked all the time, and maybe you guys would like to know too, is where do the free clinics, is there a need for free clinics? And what are we experiencing on the ground at this point? We're a partner with the county, we're a subcontractor of Department of Public Health, as signing people up for Affordable Care or giving them the information about it, so we're trying to move everybody into the system that we can from our clinic and from East County. Our focus is East County, we've already met our numbers for that subcontract before schedule, so that's how many people we've already gotten interested or knowing about the, so it's really great, and it's really helping a lot of people, but I thought I'd give you just a brief, what we're experiencing at the free clinic, and then I'll tell you a little bit about how these great students get into the clinic, and how it works, and what they do, and why they're so amazing, and if you have any questions, so. With that, let's see, a good picture here. Where do I, oh, there we go. As you know, we serve over seven thousand patients a year annually in East County with primary and preventive care. We're really a neighborhood center, so we do clothing, food through Food Share, we are a site for food stamps through HSA, so we're helping people with their utility bills, anybody we can get onto food stamps, they come every week to our clinic. We have health education, we have mental health counseling, we have free zumba in Spanish, we have hiking club on the weekends whenever our patients run. We have a lot of things going on that support the whole health of the family, in addition to all of our doctors who volunteer, and all the other medical professionals who help and mentor the students, as well as serve patients in our community. We have over a hundred medical professionals who donate their time, and three hundred and fifty-five actual volunteers at the clinic. And so in our model, our labs are free, our medications are free, our diagnostic tests are free for the population we serve, and we do screen to make sure they don't have any opportunity to get Medi-Cal or other services, but we don't want people to put off care, and so we're serving the working poor. And with that, we get over a million dollars of donated goods and services, and part of, because we are free, we are able to get, do those partnerships through Quest Diagnostics and pharmaceutical companies who give those at free or very low cost. For example, a metabolic panel would cost an uninsured person seventy-four dollars, we pay four dollars for that lab. So it makes sense for us to raise the money for that, that's all, that money all comes from donated community support and service clubs like the Rotary, and that's how we're able to do that. And just demographics of the population we serve, sixty percent are women, forty percent are men. Thousand Oaks, Newbury Park, and Simi Valley are top patient populations that we're serving. And then, of course, still the twenty to six people before Medicare age, children, we're just a bridge. We just, we have a pediatrician every week, but then we feed them into the system. So for many people, we're a bridge, until we can get them approved, and then we'll see them at our clinic. And so who will, how are we affected by the Affordable Care Act? I came here about a couple of years, almost two years ago now, and I talked about this person, Eve, and at that time, we served her, when she worked for twenty-two dollars in the insurance, twenty-two years in the insurance industry, was laid off at the age of sixty, she had nowhere to go for healthcare, and so she wasn't able to get anybody to hire her enough hours to get healthcare, and she didn't have the income to pay for it herself, and she had preconditions, she was a, and she's given me permission, so I share her story, she was a diabetic. In saying that now, with Affordable Care Act, she's a perfect candidate for the Affordable Care Act. We would not see her at our clinic anymore. So she's able to now get services, and we've helped many, many people in that situation, and it's really exciting to be able to get her access through Medi-Cal, until she became a MediMedi, which is, you know, once you get Medicare and Medi-Cal together, once you're sixty-five. So with that, people who are under one hundred and thirty-eight percent of the federal poverty level are doing great, because we can, the Affordable Care Act works well for them. Nineteen to twenty-five-year-olds can now be covered by their parents. So a lot of young people, until they can get established or get a job with insurance, are now being covered by their parents, so we no longer need to serve them as well. So they're another great group that's really being helped. The other group that's being helped, we never really saw at our clinic, and they're the lower-middle class, so people who have some discretionary income to pay a premium. And now, because they had a precondition, now they can pay that premium with Covered California, and they can, and they have healthcare before, they would, they might have come to us. So with that, who still needs free medical care? So people above one hundred and thirty-eight percent of the federal poverty level, so our working poor of our county, you know, the cost of living is a lot higher here than Mississippi or Iowa, and yet that federal poverty level happens to be the same. So if you make minimum wage at Burger King or some other establishment in the Midwest, and you make minimum wage here, your cost, your money going up for rent and, you know, food and housing, everything is really, really different, but you have the same income to work with. So that federal poverty level is okay in those places, but here, their money is, they're already short, we find at our clinic, they can't even keep a cellphone going from one month to another because of that monthly charge. Some days, some months, they get enough hours, some months they don't. So that's the population we keep serving, people who are falling through the cracks, cracks for whatever reason in the short run or long run, who may be applying or waiting, or they just got laid off, so their income looks higher than it really is, or also some people just aren't eligible, we serve that population. And then people with unstable hours, a lot of our people are domestic workers, they are gardeners, they are doing maintenance, things that fluctuate, so some months they get enough hours to pay their bills, some months they don't, so a premium doesn't really work into that picture very well. So our average income of our clinic families who are continuing to come to the clinic are thirty to forty thousand dollars. There's usually multiple generations in the household earning that, so there's the parents, the children, layers of people who are helping to pay their bills. As you know, the federal poverty level for a family of four is about thirty-two thousand five hundred, so that's very low, and that's before taxes, so really tough for people. So the jobs that our clinic people have are these types of employment here that I have listed, and so they're all jobs that are very low wage, usually minimum wage employment, which makes it really, really tough. This picture you see here is just a recent class, we have Leaders of Change Weight Loss Class, and so we are trained women of our patient population, how to be leaders in their community, like a promethorac program. So instead of saying you have a problem with your weight, we taught them how to help others with their weight, and in the process, they lost weight, because, you know, you've got to be a model for your, people you're teaching, and that is a lot, it's a public health model, train the trainer, and we do that a lot in a lot of our programs. And it was very successful. This is, this is from the state, this is a California budget project, and you can plug in any county and the single family for, and this shows you what they, what median, and this is pretty conservative, what you would typically need to earn in Ventura County to be okay, and of course, our patients are making thirty to forty thousand for taxes, so they're way below that. So we've seen a five percent increase right now at our clinic in, since the Affordable Care Act, and you might say, why? Because it doesn't make sense, because we're signing people up, and we're getting people into the system. The main reasons we're getting from people is that the fast food restaurant industry is decreasing hours under twenty, so all of a sudden, people who were being covered by their employers are now not covered by their employers, and they're not making enough income to pay a premium again. Or if they're a manager, before as a manager of a restaurant, their whole family was covered, now only the manager is legally has to be covered, and now the spouse and children, everyone else is not covered. And that means if their child is twenty to twenty-six, they're not being covered either. And there's more job layoffs, people, it's not a stable employment, that's a line we have outside our clinic for coming and getting care. So Westminster Free Clinic, as you know, we're innovative and effective and high-impact, and we are in East County, and if someday you would like a satellite model in West County, we would be open to that. We've really fine-tuned it over the years and have a lot of best practices. We are a partnership and locally funded, we don't, since we don't have state or federal funds like Medi-Cal, Medicare, things like that, we can stay free, and we are able to really adapt to changing needs, which, very quickly and easily. And of course, our team training program is one of the most unique things about us, and it's a two-year internship, so they're with us at least two years, most of our students come in in their sophomore year. We have over eighty high school students in the program, and we have, they're able to do their work in partnership with our doctors at the clinic. These are just a few pictures, and we have trainings for them weekly, so there's grand rounds at the end of the night with our physicians, they talk about different medical cases with them, they talk about medical ethics, about setting goals for themselves, so it's a really nice time when they meet with the students at the end of the night. They also are interacting and helping the patients, and they set goals for themselves for college, and a hundred percent of our students are enrolled this fall in college that graduated, so we have thirty-two graduates of our program, and we just replaced those graduates with thirty-two new students. And our students are going to Stanford, we have three students going to Stanford, we have one going to USC, one going to Georgetown, Berkeley, UCLA, they're going to amazing places, and it doesn't matter what economic level they're from, they're all going to amazing places, it's very exciting, and they're doing great. This student in the picture here, he's on his way to Yale. So this is some of our students, this is one clinic night with our doctors who are volunteering that night. We have eleven high schools represented, the average age is fourteen to seventeen years of age. Forty-two of our interns are actually serving their own community and their own families who utilize our clinic, which is very exciting, because they really understand the needs of our community. We have fifty-seven girls and thirty-two boys, that's not intentional, that's just the way it works out, more girls interview. And we select students to replace those that graduate, we have seven people on a panel that interview them, to select them, and it's quite a process, so they get a really good experience early on how to do interviewing. They get a lot of job skills through our clinic, these are just some of the trainings. They have to pass a skills test to get a name on their scrubs, so they have to, they practice with their preceptor, their preceptor is a senior, and they learn how to take temperature, pulse, respiration, patient history, height, weight, how to present to the nurse, we have electronic health records at our clinic, and they learn how to use electronic health records. They're very helpful to us, older adults who are volunteering. And then the college students who come back, so our students, once they graduate and they come back for the summer from college, they can train to be scribes, because our doctors who volunteer want to have fun when they volunteer, and they don't want to enter into electronic health records. So we actually have scribes, they have to pass the medical terminology test online, and then go through our training, and they do the scribing for our docs, and the doctor signs off. So you have to be innovative again to.
Don't talk about that to our doctors.
It's tough, imagine being a free clinic and being, having electronic health records. Yeah, so, but it really has helped us in our patient care. So the students learn how to do case management, follow, following up with their patient all the way through the process. This is before they start, the beginning of the night, we meet with all our students, we talk about how many doctors, what kind of services we're going to have that night, as you know, we're a one-stop shop, so we have the dietitian, the mental health counselor, health ed, the doctors, med refill, everything going on all at once. So once a patient gets a ride to our clinic, they don't have to come back multiple times. So the students are prepped, and then they actually take their patient, they're assigned patients by our student managers, and they take the patient through the whole night. The other services that we offer for their students, we have student managers who get trained each year, they help us run the clinic. They actually are, in our electronic health record schedule, we don't, we're first come, first served clinic, but once they come, we're lining them into how many are seeing the chiropractor, how many are seeing the doctor, based on how many volunteers we have, the students set that all up for us and keep the flow going, they assign patients to the other students, so they're really part of our administrative team. Students also, this summer, we have a doctor who donates his time to do free SAT training and ACT training for our students, and we have CPR training, we have a college and career counselor, she's in, on the brochure I just gave you on the front. She does that as a living, but for our students, she does it for free. She works, she just did an essay training class, she actually is a reader for the UC system on the essays, and she tells them what is a boring essay and what's a good one, and helps them prepare for applying to college. We have field trips to Ventura County Healthcare Agency, to Kaiser, to all over, to see other careers, outside of primary care, what else is out there in healthcare. So we also have a new group called SALUD, and it was through a grant fund that we recently received, is students advocating life-uplifting decisions, and they're doing outreach in the community, they're working with the markets. We have five markets in East County, one Simi Valley, Moore Park, two in Newbury Park, and Thousand Oaks, who have agreed in the Latino markets to work in partnership with us. What, it's a business model, so what we're doing, we're driving business to them, we have, the students came up with all of this. They actually created a newsletter in Spanish and English for our patients while they're waiting, they also created little loyalty cards. So for each business, they have little punch cards, and our doctors hand that to the patient and say, this Latino market offers soy milk, this one has skim milk, this one has soy milk, this one has whole wheat tortillas, so if you need this for diabetic or heart disease, this is the market that will have that. And then the business gets to see that we sent that patient to them, they can punch the card and get something free after so many punches for going to that market. So it's good for the business, it's good for their patients, and the businesses, I think the students would tell you when they took pictures and figured out which markets to approach, they said, they said, how much is this going to cost us? And when they learned, there was no cost, the students were doing this, they were very excited and happy to be a part of it. But, you know, you can tell people to eat healthy, but if there's no place for them to go locally, it's a really tough thing. So we have students running that program. These are some of our great student managers at the top there, they're all going to really great colleges. See, Kevin, or it's Chris, is going to USC, his brother is a twin, is going to Stanford, the guy in the middle, he's going to Cornell, and Mayella, who, she's going to UC San Diego. And we have, of course, Food Share coming, the students help with that, you can see, we also have food tasting. One time, we got big crates of Brussels sprouts, because that's happened to be what they gleaned from the fields that day, and we're going, oh, how are we going to give out Brussels sprouts for three hundred families? So we had, we made them in a really yummy way, and everybody tried them, and gave them recipes, and they took them all home, so that was really great. This just shows you some of the students in action. And so it's really neat, the long-term benefit of courses are creating access to care, they're helping their own family members in many cases, they're helping their community, so even if they don't go into healthcare, we did a ten-year follow-up study of our students, and they really said, for the rest of their life, they want to give back, and they really liked how it felt to help their community, so no matter what, I think that's a really neat thing. And also, of course, our goal is to make sure everyone has the opportunity to go to college and have a future and reach their goals, and we have had a great success with making that happen. This student up here, Megan Aguilera, she's just graduating from Stanford. Giselle down here with Supervisor Parks, she's at University of Chicago finishing up. This girl down here, she is at University of San Francisco in the nursing program. And that's a couple of years ago, and they have all graduated. Yes, and so, yeah, so you make a huge impact, we are so grateful.
You make a huge impact, and you are, we are so grateful for the work that you do.
Thank you so much.
And, you know, just also, just talking about role models, you are a great role model too, for these ladies particularly, you know, to see what you can do out there, so just thank you, and how wonderful too that you're now partnering with the business community, with the stores, what a great idea. So you guys just keep spreading, and I know also, some of the students also help in outreach and bringing folks in, and that is really an important function too.
In fact, that's how we've been doing the whole Covered California, is we already do health screenings in the community and across all of East County, and so while we're doing that, we're also then informing them. So they're coming to check their blood sugar, their blood pressure, but then we're informing them about ways to get access to care.
And then also the families that are coming in, I have some students that they can then become workers at the clinic too. So I'm going to come down and help you present all these certificates, and congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Basically, it's always inspiring for us when you come in here, thank you, I know it's long hours. I'm really happy to hear you talk about trying to expand it into West County, that would be really good for us here, or being at least willing, I should say, to support, you know, some effort here. Thank you very much, and thanks for bringing all these young people in, it really graces the boardroom to have.
And thank you, thank you, we're in good hands, I can see.
Thank you, thanks. I'll take pictures.
Oh, you'll take pictures?
Back then, I'd give them a copy, they'd have this memory of all of you taking them with them.
Okay, I thought you could also help if you want to call out the names.
Veronica is here too, Veronica, where, oh, I think she came back. I asked her to go, oh, yeah, so Veronica, come, I'll take pictures. Veronica's our teen coordinator who runs this whole thing, if you need to come. Veronica's been running the program for eight years, and she's fantastic. Do you want me to call out the names, and you just shake the hands, or is that, okay?
Sounds good. Yeah, that sounds good. All right.
Okay. I think Lisa's going to call.
Since we are cutting it close time-wise, so as people come across, we'll hold our applause, and we'll applaud everybody at the end, all right?
Justin Aguilera?
Just receive and file. Good.
Yeah.
They can make a motion, they can make a motion to receive and file. Oh, good, they're in order. They're in order. Well, we have the next row come on up. All of you. All right, there you go.
McKenna? Congratulations.
You got this.
McKenna Brown, Cassandra Buenostro. Daisy Calderon.
Actually, if you could start lining up in the front for a picture?
Yeah, we're going to all be in the back here.
That would be good, yeah. So once you receive your certificate, just start, yeah.
Frida Cruz. Bianca Delany. Yep, yep, it's already ready. Bianca. Chris.
You could just stand in the back.
Maria. Paola. Ivan. Farinha. Kayla. Dulce. Erin. Cronov. Ariely. Victor. Emily. Nicholas. Cameron. Rosa. Yeah. And if you're sure, come for us up there. Cielo. Elizabeth. Juliette. Roya. Gabriela. Kylie. Carla. Kai. Daniela. Congratulations, thank you. Now a group shot. Congratulations. Yeah, if you guys stand up.
Ready to the comments? If you could just push in a little bit more. I know it's hard.
All right, there we go. There we go.
All right, we're going to, we have now five, ten, thirty items. I'm assuming the engineer's report is going to be pretty brief. We're going to start, let's go right to item twenty-five while the children are leaving.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Mr. Powers, my name is Bill Stratt, and I'm with the Environmental Health Division. The item before you concerns the annual levy of the vector control benefit assessment for fiscal year 2014-15. The recommended action is to adopt the attached resolution approving the engineer's report confirming the assessment, the assessment is described in the report, and authorizing levy of the vector control benefit assessment for 2014-2015. This is the, well, next year will be the eleventh year for the property owner-approved benefit assessment. The recommendation is for a 2.9% increase over the current assessment. That represents about 14 cents to the assessment. And we do have John Bliss, who is the engineer of record for our engineering report. He's here in the audience. I'm, unless you're board objects, I'm going to dispense with my entire PowerPoint, but I would like to go to the last slide and just to show you, the question I'm always asked is, is where does our assessment compare to other vector control districts throughout the state? What you have here is a list of thirty other vector control benefit assessments, prepared by Mr. Bliss and his company, who also administer these assessments. As you can see, we're number three on the list. The first two are Alameda County mosquito abatement and Alameda County vector control. We're number three at 502, which is going to be the recommended rate for this next fiscal year. And the number three is San Diego at 586. So we're still one of the least expensive, if you will, mosquito and-
Is there a reason, though, you've got such huge varieties? I mean, just how much water, how much, what is that? What's usually made-
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first one.
I said, what's the difference in regards to why it can be such a wide, I mean, the cost difference?
Well, I think it's apples and oranges. I don't know what their contract hourly rates are.
I think he wants to say something behind you here, so.
It's topography and density.
There you go.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. John Bliss, SCI, it's efficient government here in Ventura County.
There you go. Okay. Renew his contract. He got too technical, that's what it is, right there. Very good.
All right. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. And thanks, thanks for being brief with the presentation. We're ready for a motion on, ready for a motion on this item twenty-five?
This is one of those quiet, successful programs.
It is.
Very, very needed.
All right. Item twenty-six, public hearing on the adoption of the ordinance amending the Ventura County flood plain management ordinance. Good morning, Mr. Shade.
Good morning, Chair Bennett, Board Supervisor, CEO Michael Powers. This morning, we're here to introduce and read the entitled only, an ordinance amending the Ventura County flood plain management ordinance, and to waive further reading and continue final adoption until July 22nd. The title of this ordinance is an ordinance amending the Ventura County flood plain management ordinance, originally acted as ordinance number 3841, as amended by ordinance numbers 3890, 3902, 3954. And largely, this amended ordinance is just to make small corrections to bring our ordinance in conformity with FEMA's NFIP. And this will be taken back up, brought back to your board July 22nd.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions for staff? Do we have any public speakers? I'll close the public hearing, and we're ready to vote on this item. It's been moved and seconded. And that item passes. We are now going to go to item fifty-three, which, I'm sorry, item fifty, which is a report back to the Board of Supervisors regarding the legal analysis of the proposed pension initiative, county council's opinion. We've received county council's written testimony. If county council has anything you specifically want to add, and is that a speaker for item fifty? Brian?
He's going to ask speaker for fifty.
Okay, all righty. I'm trying to jump back and forth between the agenda and that. All righty. So, Mr. Smith, number one, I want to let you know, we appreciate you moving quickly between last Tuesday and Friday in terms of your analysis. I think there's a number of benefits for that. Anything you would like to add besides your written testimony that you've submitted so far?
I don't have anything to add.
All right, great. Thank you very much. If we don't have any questions for Mr. Smith, we'll go to our public speakers, and we have Deborah Kaplan here to speak on item fifty. Good morning, Ms. Kaplan.
Good morning, Deborah Kaplan, from the law firm of Olson, Hagel, and Fishburne, representing Citizens for Retirement Security. As you know, we previously sent a letter to the board outlining several fatal flaws with this initiative, with the proposed initiative. And we very much appreciate the board acting promptly to have county council further research some of those issues. As we now see, county council has confirmed the most significant defect that we've identified with the initiative, and that is that once the county has opted into the state-county retirement program, as Ventura has, it's subject to continuing regulation by the state, and changes require state authorization. And I would note that this has been done before by Ventura. It's been done by many counties, subject to the same, in the same system. So this is not unheard of. But it cannot be done in the way that the initiative proposes to do it. County council identified several other legal problems, which I won't go into, but we've identified two additional problems, which I did want to mention this morning. The first is that we believe that the initiative unreasonably interferes with the authority of the board in two respects. One is the board's control of the budget. We believe that the implications of the initiative are to both limit the board's authority and to create unreasonable instability in the budgeting process, and also the board's responsibility to ensure public safety, and that includes hiring and retention of important, essential personnel, including safety personnel. And I think, generally speaking, people are aware of the San Jose experience, which is not subject to the same system, but which has, their changes have caused significant public safety concerns. The second point is that we believe the initiative is fatally flawed, because it fails to address two of the most important points, that would be, two issues that would be affected, at least indirectly, if not directly, by the initiative. And that is that it repeals the current system without replacing it with anything. It does not, even though it acknowledges that the current employees and retirees have rights, it does not provide for the, any mechanism for meeting those responsibilities or honoring those rights. And the second point is that it does away with death and disability benefits, and although it authorizes the board to create new benefits for future employees, it gives absolutely no guidance as to what the terms of those benefits might be, which is obviously very destabilizing, particularly in the safety, safety employee context. All of these points, all of the, this points to the conclusion that the proposed initiative has many, many legal defects and cannot lawfully be submitted to voters. We often hear, "Why not let the voters decide and then litigate this later?" But the courts have been clear that if a measure is invalid, if it cannot legally be adopted, then it causes a waste of public funds because of the expense of the election. It causes voter cynicism, because they vote for or against something which is, actually has no legal consequences. And it can create unnecessary controversy and divisions within the community. And on that point, I would note that this measure in particular threatens to, if it went on the ballot, and even though it may subsequently be declared illegal, it will immediately cause a harmful impact in terms of employee relations with the county. It could cause experienced personnel to leave in anticipation of severe, significant changes in the benefits program. And it will interfere with hiring and training, which, especially for safety personnel, which require a long lead time. And so the effects would begin to be felt almost immediately. Undoubtedly, the out-of-state interests who have contrived this initiative and who are funding it are not particularly concerned about the impact on the county. They are more interested in making a political point about public employee, and public employees' and benefits. But they are not entitled to make their political points by using unlawful measures, and we believe that this falls into that category. We urge the board to take its own action, supported by its opinion from county council, to, not to put this on the ballot, to initiate legal action. But if the board declines to do so, we urge the board to take action expeditiously in any event, so that the issue may be placed before the court, and the court may resolve it in advance, well in advance of the election, so that everyone is clear on its legality.
I have one question for the speaker. Ms. Kaplan, you said the board has done this in the, previously, when you say the board's done it in the, we've made changes to the pension system, but the board had to get state approval for that. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. Ventura and other counties, there are many provisions idiosyncratic to the counties that allow them to modify their plans in a way that suits local needs the best.
Thank you, thank you very much. We have no other speakers on this item. I would recommend that we simply receive and file county council's analysis. So that'd be, it's been moved and seconded, we're ready to vote. Receive and file. And we're now at item forty-one, and that is, I mean, fifty-one, I'm sorry. That's a recommendation that I submitted, that suggesting that we submit the ordinance, repeal of county employee pension plan, and, not the ordinance, submit the initiative, right? Is that correct? Is it the initiative or the ordinance? What's it refer? All right, the initiative, repeal of county employee pension plan and creation of fine contribution plan for new employees to the voters for the November 4th, 2014 general election. The, as Ms. Kaplan suggested, there is some benefit to us moving this along, so that we can maximize the amount of time that we have in court to be able to try to get ruling on this. So I think it's appropriate for us, now that we have county council's analysis. And some people might view that as contradictory- consequences, and it can create unnecessary controversy and divisions within the community. And on that point, I would note that this measure in particular threatens to, if it went on the ballot, and even though it may subsequently be declared illegal, it will immediately cause a harmful impact in terms of employee relations with the county. It could cause experienced personnel to leave in anticipation of severe, significant changes in the benefits program, and it will interfere with hiring and training, which, especially for safety personnel, which require a long lead time. And so, the effects would begin to be felt almost immediately. Undoubtedly, the out-of-state interests who have contrived this initiative and who are funding it are not particularly concerned about the impact on the county. They are more interested in making a political point about public employee and, public employees' and benefits. But they are not entitled to make their political points by using unlawful measures, and we believe that this falls into that category. We urge the board to take its own action, supported by its opinion from county council, to, not to put this on the ballot, to initiate legal action. But if the board declines to do so, we urge the board to take action expeditiously in any event, so that the issue may be placed before the court, and the court may resolve it in advance, well in advance of the election, so that everyone is clear on its legality.
I have one question for the speaker. Ms. Kaplan, you said the board has done this in the, previously, when you say the board's done it in the, we've made changes to the pension system.
Yes.
But the board had to get state approval for that. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. Ventura and other counties, there are many provisions idiosyncratic to the counties that allow them to modify their plans in a way that suits local needs the best.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have no other speakers on this item. I would recommend that we simply receive and file county council's analysis. So, that'd be, it's been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. Receive and file. And we're now at item 41, and that is, I mean, 51, I'm sorry. That's a recommendation that I submitted, that, suggesting that we submit the ordinance, the repeal of county employee pension plan, and, they're not the ordinance, submit the initiative, right? Is that correct? Is it the initiative or the ordinance? All right, the initiative, repeal of county employee pension plan and creation of defined contribution plan for new employees to the voters for the November 4th, 2014 general election. The, as Ms. Kaplan suggested, there is some benefit to us moving this along so that we can maximize the amount of time that we have in court to be able to try to get ruling on this. So, I think it's appropriate for us now that we have county council's analysis. And some people might view that as contradictory, but we don't have the choice, I believe, from county council's analysis and advice, to say, oh, we're not going to put it on the ballot. We have three choices: put it on the ballot, adopt it, or take essentially 30 days and 10 days after getting a report. That doesn't really help solve problems. That actually delays, could potentially delay. So, I think it's appropriate for us to do that. So, that would be my motion. Happy to put that on the floor for consideration. And we have some speakers, but before we go to the speakers, any questions by supervisors? All right.
You don't have to worry about the fact that you just changed the word ordinance to initiative.
Do we have to worry about that?
That's not a problem.
No, you don't have to worry about that.
Okay.
All right. Great. Thank you. All right. So, our first speaker is Mr. Dick Thompson. Good morning, Mr. Thompson.
Good morning. My name is Dick Thompson. I'm with Ventura County Taxpayers, and I'm here today for the simple purpose of supporting the supervisors in the proposed action to place this pension reform initiative on the ballot. The initiative will deliver a strong, positive impact for Ventura County. In fact, it is hard to identify a single step that could have a greater benefit than, for Ventura County residents. The initiative will reform a failing pension system, create fairness for taxpayers, improve budget stability and predictability, and free up resources for improved services and new opportunities. The initiative fully protects the pension promises made to current retirees and employees. No retiree or employee, no member of the county's pension system will lose their pension. Not one. I repeat, no retiree, no employee is going to lose their pension. Over the last 10 years, the county's pension system contribution has grown at a compounded rate of almost 15%. This board recently recognized that an additional $17 million contribution will be needed next fiscal year. This is unsustainable. The county's pension system is designed to be self-funded, but it is not. Because of an unfunded liability that is now about $1 billion, the cost for the taxpayer to keep the pension system afloat is 66% higher than the normal cost. This above-normal cost of $115 million represents services the taxpayer has paid for and the county will not be providing. This initiative will ultimately bring an end to a needlessly bloated system that places an unfair burden on the taxpayers. A sound actuarial analysis, based on the county's assumption, the only analysis of its kind that is available, found that contrary to predictions of fiscal doom, over the next 15 years, $460 million will be freed up for improvements in services, public safety, and new opportunities. New opportunities like expanded bike trails, or even services to children, like we heard about earlier today. The initiative will reduce total pension liability by $1.8 billion and avoid passing along this generation's debt to our children and our grandchildren. The initiative will create a fully transferable personal retirement account that is vested from day one. The new retirement plan is a fair deal for both new employees and taxpayers. It is a plan that is no better, no worse than private sector plans generally available to the public that must pay for it. It rewards people today for work done today. Forty thousand residents have expressed their interest in having the opportunity to vote on this initiative in November. We like Supervisor Bennett's view that this initiative is a popular one and that it will likely pass. Your decision today to put this measure on the ballot moves us one step closer to finding out if he is right. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patrick Donahue. While Mr. Donahue is coming up, I'd just like to point out, when I hear something, I'd like to point out I disagree with Mr. Thompson's assessment. Yesterday, at our budget hearings, he said that it's our pension system is not sustainable. I think we heard very clearly at our budget hearings yesterday that our pension contributions will actually be decreasing in the future. And it's the lag time as the stock market has recovered. We've paid the price for the 2008 drop. Not only will our percentage of the budget that is devoted to pension contributions drop, but the actual dollar amount will drop. That's projected by our fairly conservative projections, and so I want to make sure that that's stated out there in the record. Mr. Donahue.
Thank you. I won't repeat what Supervisor Bennett just put excellently, because last week I was here, four of you already know this is a bad initiative that will have negative consequences on our county. You don't have to be convinced of that. You spoke last week of the political courage it takes to stand up to something that is popular but wrong. The only thing that has changed in the past week is you've also been told that not only is it wrong, it's illegal. And so, I stand here today asking you, don't put to the voters something that your council tells you is illegal. Because best-case scenario, voters, as was pointed out by the attorney earlier, voters will be disillusioned when they find out after the fact their vote has no consequence. When we're looking at an incredibly historically low turnout election, the last thing we need to be doing is tell voters, your vote doesn't matter. It's, you know this is wrong, and now you know it is illegal. Don't waste both the taxpayers' time, the voters' time, also taxpayer resources inevitably defending a lawsuit that is coming when you guys put on the ballot something that you also have said is illegal. And it's unfortunate that the taxpayers' association, the proponents of this measure, have put you in a place where likely, no matter what you do today, there will be a lawsuit. Your choice, then, is deciding whether you want to be defending a lawsuit, defending yourselves for putting something you believe to be illegal forward, or whether you want to continue the political courage you showed last week and stand up for what is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue, and I hope you'll stay for the whole hearing here today on this issue, because I think you'll understand what we're doing as we, as we explain it all. Our next speaker is Mr. David Atkins. Good morning, Mr. Atkins.
Good morning. Hey, thank you, board. I just want to mostly reiterate what Patrick just said. Obviously, I think there's a huge problem for democracy if the voters vote on something and then find out later on that it was not legally valid. That hurts everyone. It hurts democracy. It also is, means that you're going to have a series of electoral distractions, because if it goes on the ballot, the voters vote on it this year, it gets waived, voters get very angry, every issue group gets angry, then it comes back up in 2016, and then you go through this again. I don't think that helps anyone. I don't think it helps either side politically. I don't think it helps the board politically, whichever side of this you're on. I think mostly it just hurts democracy, is voters get frustrated and don't think that the system works. And then everyone looks less competent, which is also not the objective here. The only other thing that I would suggest as well is that if the voters vote on an initiative that is currently illegal, and then the initiative has to be reworded, because I have every suspicion that, you know, folks aren't going to quit just because this one was illegal, then you have to come up and vote on it again. And it's better for democracy, frankly, if the voters have a chance to vote on a proposition that is actually legal when it comes up, and if the point of doing this is to actually give the voters their say, as opposed to have it appear that supervisors, sorry, prevented the voters from having their say, which is, I'm sure, the attack that would, that would come on you. It's far better, I think, to have their voters have their say on a legal initiative. In an election cycle, frankly, two years from now, when a much larger share of the voters will actually be able to have their say, because we are looking at a very low turnout election this cycle. So, I think for the purpose of democracy and the appearance of competence of the system, it would work far better to allow this process to continue, allow revision from, from the, from their side, and then to do this in 2016 in a, in a coherent and responsible way, rather than have a huge distraction that serves no real purpose this cycle.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Atkins. Do we have any other speakers on this item? I would just like, for the board members, I'd like to respond. I concur with how frustrating and inappropriate it is for citizens to vote on an invalid initiative that is out there. And our next item, I think, is where I'll really try to make that point, which is why we have the next item on, which is to direct county council.
May I speak to this issue?
Well, if you'll fill out a card, if you'll fill out a card for us, ma'am, and state your name for the record. Once you take the card, state your name for the record, and then you can, okay, I can fill out the card.
My name is Christine Will, and I worked for the county for 35 years.
Good morning.
Twenty of those years on the graveyard shift at Ventura County Medical Center, and I am retired, and I'm working against this idea of the ballot initiative. Pretend like this is the petition. I saw a lot of paid petition gatherers out there, and they would say, they would get them to sign the first page. Oh, but why don't you, while you're here, sign all five of these petitions? I will say that there were 40,000 signatures, but I will bet you that it was pension envy, and it was also people who really didn't know what they were signing. They did not have time, after leaving the grocery store, to read the fine print. And I just don't want to see this on the ballot, because I think it's going to, when you work in an organization like the hospital, you have to have cooperation. If some of you are on the pension system and others of you are not, that is really bad. The other point I'd like to make, besides the fact that a lot of voters really didn't know what they were signing, or the repercussions to the economy in this county, I think this is very bad for the county to put this on the ballot, and if it passes, it's even worse. It's going to be years of litigation if those in the union can afford that, which I know oftentimes they cannot. So, I, I think that's a sham to say that this is the voter, to put this on the ballot, because people really, I think, did not quite, quite understand. I had another point, but I'm afraid I forgot it. But I think we're doing a lot of disservice. I'm going to be out there fighting if this is on the ballot. I, in the last election, I walked a lot of precincts, and everybody I was supporting did manage to win. I was on, I'll be on the call station. I would rather be up north with my new grandson, but unfortunately, if this gets on the ballot, I'm going to be here fighting it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll go back to the, to the point that I was making. I agree that if there is an invalid, illegal initiative on the ballot, it is bad for the community for that to go forward. The question is, what's the appropriate way, if it is invalid and illegal, what's the appropriate way for that to not show up on the ballot? And I believe long conversations with county council, and sort of the reading of the law that is out there, and what we've seen with other cases, is that the appropriate way is for a judge to rule that, to rule before we print the ballots, that it should not be printed onto the ballots. And now that we have county council with an opinion that he also believes that it is illegal and an invalid initiative, our next motion after this, after we vote to put this on the ballot, would be to direct county council to go into any, again, any legal action that's filed against the county by proponents or opponents, to go in and make the case consistent with the analysis that he's given us. In other words, the county would not be going in and saying, hey, we should be allowed to leave this on the ballot. The county would be actually going in and saying, we actually share the belief, the analysis, that Ms. Kaplan's firm has come up with, that we don't think that it's valid, and we believe, and we would be asking two things of the judge. One, rule quickly before the ballots are printed. But that that is the appropriate way and the legal way for this to go forward. If you read the legislation, the state legislation says we have three choices: put it on the ballot, adopt it, or study it for a while, and then put it on the ballot. It doesn't give us the fourth choice of saying, we don't think that it is legal, and therefore, we don't want to put it on the ballot. We have to have a, we have to have a judge make that decision, and there have certainly been, been cases about that and stuff. So, with that, appreciate, again, I appreciate the frustration that some people may feel if they go, well, the board has an analysis from the attorney that thinks it's not legal, and the board's turning around putting it on the ballot. But we think that's actually the best way to get this in front of a judge, so that we can get a final determination timely before there is, before the ballots are actually printed. So, if we, if we delayed, the possibility is we, we may delay the, a ruling on this thing, and this way it will be out there. The issue will be ripe for a judge to be able to make the decision. We know, we know that the courts are reluctant to do that, but we also know there's pretty compelling legislation out there with regard to that. So, I have, I have some other comments I'll make when we get to the third item, which is I think is the most, most appropriate, which is the direction to county council in terms of what direction to take. But with this item, we have a motion to approve this modified, supervisor, we have one, we have the motion, we have that seconded. We're ready to vote on this item, to place it on the ballot.
Let me just say, Leroy, you got a lot of fans out there. You must be 100% right all the time. I don't think that's always true, but we have the opportunity for the courts to take a look at this, and I think that's what, but the voters have asked, and that's what we'll do. So, I appreciate that.
All right.
And I do respect Leroy. I'm just making a joke about that.
Okay. So, this is a motion to place the initiative on the ballot. And I want to just have, you know, this is a recommendation I made, I just hope county council will, as this meeting goes on, just make sure we've come up with the right language for this in terms of the direction of clerk. Have we cited the proper things and all of that? Before we adjourn the meeting today, if we, if we have to make some modification to make sure we have this properly noticed, I'd appreciate that. All right. Thank you.
I mean, it's clear, I just, we might as well, whether you say initiative or ordinance, it doesn't really matter. It's clear that the board is referring, submitting to the ballot, the initiative which proposes an ordinance, and that's good enough. So, it's clear that that's the act the board is voting on right now.
The paparazzis have jumped on you here too. Supervisors, there you go.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to vote for this. I, I do not believe in the, in the defined contribution. You know, I think that our, our employees have worked real hard for a defined benefit that they have. And, and I also believe that some of the individuals that signed that the petition did not know what they were signing, number one, because of all the press that we've gotten about employees, public employees, and their benefits. But again, I want to share that the public employees, the average public employee earns probably about $34,000 a year in retirement. I also believe that it should go to a judge. It should go to the legal process, because we don't want to be wasting the taxpayers' money. If it's illegal, then I think the judge hopefully will rule that we do not overrule us on this, on this item if we do vote to put it on the ballot, because it's illegal. And I think it's important that people understand that we don't want to waste the taxpayers' money by putting an item that's illegal on the ballot. However, we ought to put it, because supposedly 40,000 people signed this petition, and I'm sure that a judge is going to side with us and also with the county council's determination.
Thank you. We're ready to vote. This motion to place the initiative on the ballot. Passes unanimously by the board. Now, we have the third item, which is we've been told we're going to have a lawsuit filed against us, and I believe that's going to be filed today. Is that right, Ms. Kaplan?
Oh, yes, that's right.
All right. So, there'll be a lawsuit filed against us. So, the next thing we have to do is direct county council in terms of how to handle that lawsuit. And so, this, do we have any speakers on this item? All right. So, we have direction, I mean, we have analysis from county council. I'd like to have my PowerPoint one, if you'd put PowerPoint one up, please. I'd like to make these points. And last week, I asked the question, could the board of supervisors, I didn't ask, or the citizens by local initiative, could the board of supervisors vote to switch all new employees from our current pension plan to a 401K plan? County council said no. This week, county council is adding, now my question is, could the board of supervisors or the citizens by local initiative vote to switch all new employees? And I think we very clearly saw with item 50, county council has offered an opinion that says, no, that's, that's not the case. Next, next slide, please. Fact is, do we have a little clicker? I can, that's all right. We got a good system working up there. No, you got the wrong, you got the wrong one. PowerPoint one, please. That's PowerPoint two. That's PowerPoint two. So, okay, all right, thank you, all right. You'll go, go to the beginning of this PowerPoint, please. All right, this is the first one. Why a timely decision is, is so important for our community. We now have the initiative on the ballot, it's ripe for it to be in front of a judge, and I'd like to offer, these are the reasons. Next, next slide, please. One, a timely decision is good for our community because, next slide, please, because county council's analysis is compelling. One of the, one of the thresholds for the courts to consider the case early is the fact that there is some serious doubts as to the validity of, of the initiative. I think county council has certainly made a compelling case there. Strong likelihood that the courts would find this initiative illegal, and therefore the court should make a timely decision. Next slide, please. A divisive campaign for an invalid initiative would needlessly scar and divide our community. There are a number of court rulings that identify the, this exact same sentiment that is out there. So, next slide, please. A campaign for invalid initiative would also frustrate citizens. That's one of the things that was alluded to by Mr. Donahue and Mr. Atkins. It would frustrate citizens and erode confidence in government. To have people go through the whole campaign, vote for an initiative, feel like they were successful, and then turn around and have the courts make, call it invalid afterwards, does erode citizens' confidence in, in the, in the democratic process overall. Next slide, please. A campaign for an invalid initiative can also rob other campaigns of resources and distract voters from the real issues they should be deciding on. Instead of spending significant time and, and resources on an invalid initiative, then there's less time, resources, and energy available for a valid initiative. Next slide, please. When a credible and compelling argument has been made claiming an initiative is invalid, it just makes common sense to decide the question in advance of printing the ballots. And I think you have to say that we, that threshold has been reached by our county council's analysis. Credible, compelling, that the initiative is invalid, the courts, I believe, should follow a common sense process here and decide the question in advance of printing the ballots. Next slide, please. In fact, the California Supreme Court, and it should say the appellate courts, agree, and, next slide. This is one ruling. It is well established that pre-election law review of a ballot, of ballot majors is appropriate where the validity of the proposal is in serious question, and where the matter can be resolved as a matter of law before unnecessary expenditures of time and effort have been placed into a futile election campaign. That was a ruling of the Fourth Appellate Court there, and it's cited up, up at the top. And I think that's, that's the question that's really in front of us at this point in time. And this comes right from county council's analysis, where the validity of the proposal is in serious question, and we, we have reached that threshold. Next slide, please. If an initiative is invalid, no purpose is served by submitting it to the voters. There's another court ruling that's out there. Next slide, please. This is the appellate court also ruling, and it identifies with things that I think were in my previous slides. The cost of an election and, and of preparing the ballot materials necessary for each major are far from insignificant. Proponents and opponents of a measure may both expend large sums of money during the election campaign. Frequently, the heated rhetoric of an election campaign may open permanent rifts in the community. That's the people's right to, that the people's right to directly legislate through the initiative process is to be respected and cherished does not require the useless expenditure of money and creation of emotional community divisions concerning a measure which is for any reason legally invalid. That's a pretty clear, compelling statement from the court. It echoes the three things I said in our slide, echoes some of the things we've heard here, which is, you don't need to divide your community emotionally, you don't need to expend those resources, time, and energy, you don't need to distract people. Next, next slide, please. That's the end of that, okay. Let's go ahead and go to the PowerPoint, the next PowerPoint presentation, please. And here we are. Asked a question of county council last time, and he answered that question. Next slide. The Taxpayers Association, like anybody else that, that writes an initiative and submits it out there in front of the citizens, has a responsibility to write a legally valid initiative. Next slide. Ironically, if they have not, they will cost the taxpayers a great deal of money. I think ironically, they have Taxpayers Association potentially cost the taxpayers a great deal of money if they've written an invalid initiative. Next slide, please. With invalid measures, taxpayers must pay the opponents' legals' fees. If you write a valid measure, you can also get challenged, but if you're challenged and you're successful, the taxpayers do not have to pay the attorney fees of the opponents. But if you're not valid, you have to pay those attorney's fees of the opponents. Next slide, please. 4088 was an initiative written, and it was ruled illegal and invalid. It cost the taxpayers over a million dollars in legal fees on the fight over 4088. Another one of these initiatives that was out there, people gathered the signatures, and ultimately the courts ruled it illegal. Next slide, please. The sooner this gets resolved, bottom line is, the less it will cost taxpayers. There will be fewer legal fees run up if this can get resolved before the election, and it's in everybody's best interest. If it is resolved that it is invalid, there will be a cost that the taxpayers will have to incur as a result of this, and, but it will be less of a cost if it is resolved in a timely manner before the ballots are printed. So I hope that, that's, that's why I'm proposing the motion in front of us at this point in time, which is to authorize county council to make two points in any court cases that are filed. One, that county council has been authorized by the board to go in and file with his compelling argument that it is an invalid initiative. And two, to make the case, and to submit whatever documents county council thinks are appropriate, to make the case that a judge should rule quickly on this particular, I shouldn't say quickly, I don't like that term, should rule timely on this manner before the ballots are printed. So it's a two-part motion in terms of this resolution. One, to respond consistent with his ruling, and two, to file whatever documents could help make the case for a judge to hear the case in a timely manner. So that'd be my motion. That's been seconded, and we're ready to vote.
Let me make a couple comments first.
What'd you say?
Make some comments.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. Supervisor Foy.
In your PowerPoint, you put the word compelling. Something always looks compelling until you see the other side. No question about it. You always hear one side until you hear somebody else's, there's compelling. That's one. Then you said something about distracting voters from the real issues. I don't, I don't know if we're the only ones who have the real issues here. I mean, the voters themselves can come up with their own issues that are important. I don't look at us as gods, and that we're the only ones that come up with that. So I guess I, I don't, I don't take that as quite the same way. But on the other side of it, you talk about saving money, costing money, and all this stuff. Well, first of all, this goes to the ballot. It's, we know that right now, if anybody runs countywide, what's it cost? Four or five thousand dollars for somebody to run countywide with the, with the piece on there that, that anybody has? So it's a very minimal cost, because we're already gonna, we're not asking for a new election or anything else, so it's very minimal of any cost. A few thousand dollars is maximum amount, which is la ba ba la. The other side of this here is, we go down this process, we're, we could be spending tens of thousands, or I don't know how much, depending on all the stuff going around. If this goes out to the, out to the voters, and forty thousand people said, "We want an opportunity to look at the information and vote, we don't want this board of supervisors to deny us." The second part is that, at that point, then if it gets fought, which it will, of course, the union or somebody else fights it, and the taxpayers' group fight it, costs the taxpayers zero amount of money, and it still gets done what they need to do. Costs them zero. So I don't know how we, as this board, go out and say, "I'm gonna pull from Ojai, I'm gonna pull from Thousand Oaks, from Simi, from Moore Park, from Cambria," take all those taxpayer money, and we're deciding what we're gonna fight, when the voters themselves have said, "We want a chance for this to be fought." We can't go take their money and just say, "We'll spend tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands, whatever it's gonna cost Leroy and all his team to do that work." We don't have that right to do that, when the private sector, the private citizens themselves, and the unions, whoever it's gonna be, will spend that money to fight. They will spend it, we won't have to spend it. And then when the, and then you have forty thousand people out there, which is, you know, about ten percent of our, of our people who are registered to vote, who said, "Look, we want at least to get a chance to look at this thing." So I'm not sure we, we have that a right to come out and say that we want to take their money and do this, when we know privately it will be done without any taxpayer dollars. So that's, 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 that to me is a little bit of a situation. And the idea that, you know, we're gonna say that we think it's illegal, so we're gonna do that, when, hold it. Those people had the right to, to read it, to do it, to vote. I mean, this thing went on for months and months, so there's a lot of information out there. I just, I don't, I don't have any problem with the idea that somebody's gonna fight it. We know that happens on every single initiative. There's people for and against, that's it. But to take taxpayer dollars and say to our county council, "You go take those dollars and you just fight based on what we say up here," I don't know, I struggle with that, when the taxpayers themselves said, "Don't take our money and do that, let those other organizations fight that for us." And so I, I struggle with where you're trying to go here. I mean, the idea, let the voters do what they do, and at the end, let it come out. Now, you wanna say, maybe it's illegal, it'll disrupt, you know, I don't see people getting disrupted over a lot of things that have fought, and people have gone for different stuff. You know, I'm, I just don't understand that point, because the idea is that if something gets out there and is turned over by, in the courts, not always illegally, it may have been something that, how it was written, if it was written differently, it wouldn't have been illegal. It's not, I, I want to be careful what we say is illegal, because the voters have the right to say what, how they want to spend their money. And I think it's important we do it that. So, anyway, I just, I don't know if we have the authority, or Leroy may say we have the authority, we can just take the authority to go to spend taxpayer dollars, to fight something that somebody else will pay to do, when I've got, you know, granny out there that said, "Look, I'm not involved in this at all, don't get involved with me, but you're taking my money to go do that." You know, that, that to me is a very difficult thing for us to do. I appreciate what you're trying to do here, but I just don't think we have authority to ask our county council to go out and spend whatever amount of money it is to do that, so.
If, if, if I could, I just would like to respond, and then I'll catch the two of you. And I think the, the best way to, I think, I think that Supervisor Foy, the way I hear you, I think you're misunderstanding some of the realities in terms of what's gonna happen, so I'm gonna ask county council a question. County council, if we did nothing except put it on the ballot, all right, and then we had a campaign, the campaign was over, and if the initiative was successful, and then there was a lawsuit filed against the campaign by the same firm after the election, right? And that lawsuit was fought and, and all, and ultimately, the, the initiative was found illegal, invalid, right? Would we have to pay? Would we have to use taxpayers' money to pay? We'd have to pay the attorney's, the attorney's fees of the challenger.
I don't know the answer to that. I, I think there's, that would be a matter of dispute. I can't say definitively, we would be liable for their attorney's fees.
Okay.
If we acted, as long as we acted in good faith all along the way.
Uh-huh.
Now, I would say, if we refused to put it on the ballot, like today, if we, if we had just refused to put it on the ballot, or adopt it, and then we drew a lawsuit, and someone had to sue us to put it on the ballot, then I know we would be responsible for attorney's fees. But in your scenario, I can't say for certain that we would be responsible for the attorney's fees of that party.
All right. Certainly, there have been cases where the courts have awarded attorney's fees, and they've been paid for by government entities in similar situations on initiatives.
Yeah, so I think it'd be in the discretion of the court.
Uh-huh.
And it'd be under this private attorney general theory, which if a citizen had to, or any group, had to spend private funds in order to compel a public entity to act legally, then, and they could make some other showings, then they could be awarded attorney's fees. But that, I think it'd be in the discretion of the judge whether that was met here, because the county, by referring it to the ballot today, for example, was really complying with the state mandate. We have no choice ultimately, other than to put it on the ballot, or adopt it, or file our own lawsuit.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I, I would offer, that is, I mean, the issue that we're, we are, if we get, if, if we get sued, and we're going to get sued, we're gonna have costs. The question is, what position should county council take in, in that particular lawsuit? So the county council be trying to defend the, the validity of the initiative, or not? And so we're, we're in that situation either way. I don't believe that that is a taxpayer's expense.
Let me just ask one real quick, if I could. Leroy, if this thing goes to, sorry to put you on the spot here, but, no, but if this thing, if, if this thing goes to the voters, and it, and it goes on, and it passes, and then, let's say the unions want to fight that. Do they fight it with us, or they fight it in the court saying, "It's illegal"?
They would have to fight it in court.
In court. So we're not involved at all, right? They're the ones that fight it, and then, and the taxpayers or somebody else is going to fight that it is legal, and they have that argued, they have that court case, don't they?
No, I know that, I know the answer to that question.
Hang on, let's, let's just ask it, let's just ask.
Well, I mean, in any of these scenarios, we would be named as a defendant.
Right. And I, I understand we're gonna be named in it, but who's gonna do the fight? Are we gonna do the fight, or is the union's gonna fight, or whoever else is gonna just defend it, or not defend, or fight it?
If, whether it's pre-election or post-election, the county would be named as a defendant.
Right.
And then the third party in this scenario would be a real party in interest. So whether the proponent sued, or the taxpayer, I'm sorry, the, the coalition sued, they may name a real party in interest, but the county would definitely be the defendant in both of those lawsuits. So we have to, now, we are a participant in the lawsuit, you know, by, we, we have no choice. We, we are in the lawsuit under any scenario. And so when we're in the lawsuit, and let's say the immediate one is, the, the union coalition has said they're gonna file a lawsuit today, they will name the county in that lawsuit.
I understand that. I'm talking about after.
And then, and then would be the same post-election, they would name the county, and then we have a choice. We can just be neutral, not, I mean, we would still have to file things, the court would require us to participate and file things, but we could just say, "We take no position, whatever the court says, we'll follow." Or we could take a position, if we believe it's invalid, we can take that position. If we think it's valid, we could take that position.
Okay, but let, let me ask though, so if we, if the coalition's taken the same tack that it's invalid, we could just take a neutral position and let them fight it?
We could be neutral.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So we don't have to incur a lot of cost in this if we don't want to?
I don't know by lot of cost, I mean, either way.
I know you have some, because when you're named, you have to do some work, yes.
Right. I'm not sure the cost would be different, you know, materially different, no matter what position we take, we still are participating in the lawsuit.
Yeah, okay. Well, anyway, all right. So I understand that, I'm just, I'm just looking at it from a standpoint, if we do it in a pre, this, we know guaranteed a whole bunch of costs, and we know if we do it post, maybe their costs are different, and allowing somebody else to do it, and we're not denying the voters their rights, so.
And I certainly would say that we are exposed to the demand for attorney's fees in that situation, and I would find it sort of incredulous for us to say, "We have an opinion from our county council that believes it is invalid, and we think the position we ought to take is neutrality." I mean, what, you have, you have a county council that offers you an opinion, and, and in terms of moving forward. But the other two issues I want to respond to. When I use the term "real issues," I'm not suggesting this is not a real issue, we're not trying to identify what the real issues are, but the valid issues that people should be spending their time and resources on in the election is a legitimate issue, to make sure that you're not having people waste their time on an invalid issue. That's what I mean by saying, that's what people should be spending their time on. And when you talk about campaign cost, I want to try to emphasize this in terms of campaign cost. If you go through the campaign... If you go through the campaign, a whole lot of people are gonna spend a lot of money on both sides in this campaign. That money is not recoverable when the election is over, if the initiative was, is ruled as invalid. That money is lost. Nobody gets to recover that money. It doesn't make any sense. That's money, that's money that could be used for other campaigns, people could use for other reasons. And so that's why I suggest that there is a dollar amount, that's one of the issues that suggests there should be a timely decision by a judge in this particular case. We have Supervisors Parks, Long, and Zaragoza that all wanna go, so we'll just go ripping our way right down here, all right?
Thank you. I think what our county council has found, at least 10 different reasons why he thinks it's illegal, some of them are, one, similar to the 4088 measure that was on the ballot that was adopted, and one that we ended up spending about a million dollars in taxpayer dollars, finding out that it was actually not a valid initiative. And that was a lot of taxpayer dollars. So I don't want to get in that situation again. And I think that if people are out there collecting signatures for an initiative, and they say, "Sign here," or if they say, "It's an illegal initiative, sign here," I don't think people would sign an illegal initiative to put it on the ballot if they thought it was illegal. So I think that we have a duty to find out if it's legal or not, and if, and there is a mechanism in place that we can do that in an expedited fashion, that could save a lot of money in the long run if it is illegal. Mr. Donahue said that the initiative is illegal, we know it's illegal, so we shouldn't put it on the ballot. Well, you know, I don't know it's illegal, and I won't know it's illegal until we find out from a judge. And I think because we have that mechanism available to us, doing it before it gets on the ballot is going to save money, and also save the frustration of voters who see time and time again, you know, something that they thought was law, all of a sudden go away. So I think it's better to do it beforehand. And while that 4088, the reasons for the 4088 becoming invalid were kinda complex, this one, one of the major reasons cited for it being illegal is saying, "This is not something the county can do, or voters can do. It's only something the state can do." And that's, that to me seems like a pretty overriding condition. So while there are maybe 10 other reasons, that, that one is a pretty significant one. Can, can this happen? Can the voters do it? Can the county do it? And from what we're hearing, no, only the state can do it. So if that's the case, it has to be a state law, not a county law. And that, and all the other reasons, make me wanna make sure that if it's illegal, it doesn't go on the ballot.
Supervisor Long?
I'll just start out by saying, we have a representative government. And to, in saying that, we have elected leaders in this county, and cities, up and down this state, that are entrusted by the voters to take actions that are oftentimes toughed, oftentimes challenged, but to do the right thing based on what is basic principle of law, basic principle of governance, and as, as in this case, I believe soundly in the state constitution, and that is the Board of Supervisors entrusted with the budgetary authority, and that is our role and our responsibility. We asked county council to give us this legal opinion. I think he did an outstanding job, and did so in a timely fashion. And timely in that we, it is, it is very divisive in a community, and it leaves scars for years. Think about Proposition 187. It still scars this state. And it was written, it was passed, it was challenged, it was overturned. There are other examples along the same lines of initiatives or propositions that have divided communities, and I think long-term. And I, so I fully support that we challenge this. I had to hold my nose to even say, to put it, to move forward with what we are, in essence, required to do, to put it forward to the voters. Because I also know, as much as statements are made, when you feel you're on the right side of an issue, that, "Look at all of these signatures collected." We all know how that is done. We all know how disingenuous oftentimes that signature collecting can and is enacted, and that it is not, does not give a fair representation of the complexities and the unintended consequences of an initiative action. Again, examples of those that have gone before the vote, has been passed, and then overturned by law. We have the responsibility, as the representative government, to be able to certainly manage the taxpayer dollars and resources, and as was shown in our budget yesterday, and the forecast that we have in this county. This county is very aware of its responsibilities to the taxpayers, in managing the funds of the taxpayers, and having a quality, strong workforce, and ensuring that that workforce works for the taxpayers and the residents of this county. And speaking specifically to what this initiative is proposing to do, that it, moving the plan to a different plan can be accomplished. It's been accomplished in other areas, but not by this methodology, not by this backdoor approach to taking what is a very complex, invested, and a model, since 1937, or whatever the date was, enacted in this county.
Forty-nine.
Thank you, forty-nine. Thank you. And this, again, was shown last night, and has been shown repeatedly by the CEO since February, that we are a strong county. Our system is not broken. If it's not broken, what's to be fixed? Is it to be fixed because you have, there are other issues, or philosophies, or differences of opinion, whether they be political or philosophical, that you, you take this step as a way to, to do, to enact something that you feel is more philosophically aligned? I think this is very disingenuous. I think that we are compelled to act, and I think we are better serving the public and the taxpayers by acting ahead of the time, getting this to the courts, asking them for a timely review. I believe it is, with this opinion and this board's action, ripe for that consideration, and to, I would hope, save us all from, when we, a battle in November that is not necessary, as we say, as we read today, I believe is illegal. And when you talk about voter turnout, and I, the folks who are here today to speak to that, I would hope we stop saying that, number one. I would hope we find ways that we instill in the voters, the electorate in this county, that they turn out in November. And they don't turn out in a defensive position, they turn out because they believe in representative government and democracy. So I really, we need to change that, and we need to start calling on people to get out and vote for a variety of other, probably much more important reasons than this. But, so I very much support the action we're taking.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'd just like to share that we were elected by the, by our residents here in Ventura County to represent the taxpayers and their constituency. And also, we hire a county council to give us advice. And I believe that our county council has given, and has some excellent advice into the pension, that the pension initiative is an invalid initiative, that he has determined that the, the initiative conflicts with state law. And also, I'd like to share that if those 40-plus people that signed that initiative would have been told that this initiative is invalid, they probably would never have signed it. And I believe that, that the voters, the voters in Ventura County should be given the right information, not invalid information, to vote on this issue if it ever goes to that point. But I still believe that we, this is a legal problem, and it should be taken to the courts, and let a judge tell us if it's legal or illegal. And in this way, either the ballot goes forward, or the judge says, "No," because it's an invalid ballot or initiative, this way, they have, the voters have opportunities to vote either yes or no on this, on this item. I believe that it would be a waste of money if we were to continue without any litigation, because then, if it comes back, like was mentioned before, it will cost us more money to try to, to come out with an initiative to repeal this, this particular item. So I believe right now that I'm gonna vote to take it to, to a judge, to take it to have him, or that court system rule on the legality of this, of this ballot.
Thanks, Supervisor Zaragoza. Mr. Smith, one question for you. Does the resolution give you the authority to submit declarations from whatever individuals are able to sign those?
Yes, it does.
Do you need anything else?
No, it's sufficient for us.
All right, great. Thank you very much. All right, so with that, for me, I'd just like to end with a comment. Last week, the statement was made, "We have followed the rules, now go and put it on the ballot." And I think part of following the rules is to write a legally valid initiative, and I think we need to find out whether the rules were followed with a legally valid initiative or not. And I think this gives us the most appropriate way for us to try to get a timely resolution to this. So we're ready to vote now, on behalf of the board? And four to one, we direct...
You know, if you think it's legal, I would vote for this, and take care of it right at the onset, and do it in the least costly manner.
I have no problem with that. I just want somebody else besides taxpayers to pay that, to cost that.
But, all right, that measure passes, and we, we'll see the next step. Appreciate everybody coming for their testimony today. And we have 11 o'clock, time certain. Barry, did we make it? I'll tell you, Barry Zimmerman is...
Where are you?
It's Barry's 11:30. I'm afraid we need to do that first. I'm sorry, Mr. Fleisch, because Barry won't be able to be here. So we'll hold for Barry Zimmerman. I think, I think Ms. Lewis just went out to get him, right?
Does he wanna come out?
Yeah. David, is yours really quick?
It is really quick.
Let's do it really quick. All right, go ahead. All righty, thank you. And the private oil pipeline, item 28, is that quick also?
Yes, it is.
Who's got that? All right, great. We'll knock those two out, and then you're on, Barry.
Open the hearing.
Good morning, Chair Bennett, Supervisors, Mr. Powers for the record, I'm Dave Fleisch with the Public Works Agency Transportation Department. The item before you is to open a public hearing and receive testimony on the annual assessment for the Santa Rosa Valley. This is the ninth year of this, and...
Okay.
Do you have any cards, Mr. Chair?
I don't, I have no speakers listed on my screen.
Well, if you wanna close the public hearing, I'll be glad to make the motion.
I'll be happy to close the public hearing.
And thank Mr. Bliss for helping put together this assessment to begin with, and just continues it. Thank you.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, we're ready to vote. All right, item 28.
Good morning, Chair Bennett, members of the board, Mr. Powers. The item before you is a public hearing on the grant of a new 20-year franchise to Vintage Petroleum LLC. Hold a public hearing, and if there are no speakers, close the hearing, grant the...
Do we have any speakers on this item? We have, we have no speakers, we'll close the public hearing, we're ready for a motion. And that item, that item passes. And we're at item 29, public hearing regarding adoption of resolution on service charges for the sewer. Stand by.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Bennett, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Reddy Pacala with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. I'll be presenting the next three items. Item number 29 is a public hearing for County Service Area Number 30, which provides sanitation services to the community of Nyland Acres. As you know, Nyland Acres is outside the city of Oxnard, just north of 101 freeway. All of the sewage from the community of Nyland Acres goes to the city of Oxnard for treatment and disposal. We are not recommending any changes to the current sewer service charges or the standby charges. We are simply requesting your board to adopt a resolution in our staff report, which authorizes collection of these charges on the annual general county tax roll. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Do we have any public speakers? Close the public hearing, we're ready for a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Ray, do you understand that you haven't had an increase in that area since 1996 or so, or something like that?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And the main reason is, prior to that date, we used to have a step system, which was very expensive to operate and maintain. Since that time, we were able to get federal grant to replace with the gravity collection system, and that's the reason we are able to hold off the rate increases. At any time, if you feel that there's a rate increase necessary, you will come back to your board with a rate increase.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone voted? Okay, thank you, and that passes, five oh. Next up then is item 30, item 30.
This is also a public hearing for Ventura County of Waterwork District Number 17, which provides water supply to the community of Bell Canyon. We are recommending that your board adopt a resolution to collect water standby charges as part of the annual general county tax roll. Our recommendation is for you to approve our charges on the tax roll. I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay. Well, this is a public hearing, no cards submitted, close the public hearing, any questions? Okay, let's vote. Okay, vote's done, all right. Item 31.
Item 31 is for Ventura County Waterwork District Number One, which provides water and sanitation services, city of Moore Park and areas to the north and west of the city. I'm sorry, I think I mixed up items 31 and 32. This 31 is for 17, this for Bell Canyon. We are requesting that your board authorize a resolution to collect the taxes on the tax roll.
Right. This too is a public hearing. Anyone in the public speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing.
Remove the recommendation.
Motion to second. We were following you already. Please vote. All right, then that wraps up that. Okay.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, ready. All right, let's move on to item 32.
Mrs. Zimmerman, do you still have time for this item?
Yeah, we have time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for accommodating, and I know it's been a busy morning here. Hopefully, this will be a little bit lighter subject than what was discussed earlier. But for the record, I'm Barry Zimmerman, Director of the Human Services Agency, and I'm here to present a kind of a status report on our Foster Health Link project that we've been working on. I'd like to recognize a few, we have some individuals here that you may not know, but I'd like to recognize them really fast that are part of this whole initiative and effort here. And we'll start, I'll look there, we got Linda Bowman, most people recognize her around. We've got a group here from the Children's Partnership that has been a great force and an advocate for us, and a driver in this here. And we got Sherri Davis, who's the chair of the Children's Partnership, has come, she's representing, and then staff, we got Jenny Pettiford, and Alex, I didn't get your last name.
Sorry.
Okay. Alex is here from the Children's Partnership. She's an intern for the summer, helping out, so that's good, we'll put her to work with the project. Jesus Torres from Verizon, Verizon's been a great supporter for this project, and Kiki Nocella. I don't know if I said that correctly, Nocella? All right. She's been our consultant, and then Letty Morales for my staff, has been really the lead for us within the agency, and Judy Weber, you know, and Mike... And Mike Pettit, who's also been instrumental lately in really working on the technical aspects of some of the IT work that is slated for this project here. I'd just like to recognize that this project started a while back, and it started back with Mike and I. If you recall those days, we were approached actually by Linda to say, hey, here's a concept, and the Children's Partnership has an idea that we think Ventura County would be interested in seeing if they could figure out how to do it that would benefit foster children. And that's what initiated a lot of the idea. It was very, very good. Both of us took that challenge and said, sure, let's see what we can do with the concept of building a system that would help foster children, in particular, the caregivers when they're small, to equip them with the necessary information to improve their health and their well-being as they're taken care of in our system. So the project is to create an electronic system or electronic record system, in particular focusing on health, that would follow the child that would be theirs, and they can have that with them as they may move from relative to another home or to within the foster system themselves. So the purpose is to empower the youth as well as caretakers with information that can benefit them in their well-being, in particular in health, as well as other areas of their life. We hope that the objective from this project is that we will see a greater level of care for the children in many regards, that more information that someone has about a child and they can care for them better, and then we don't have to go to the more higher-level care, going to the emergency rooms, these type things, because we will have a profile that could follow a child and understand what their medical needs and conditions are that someone could take care of them. So Ventura County is known as a pilot. We have, this is known at the state level as well, throughout the Department of Human and Health Services up there, the state, the agency is aware of this project and our efforts here in doing it. We have kind of an ideal situation here in the county, and we've heard this a lot in our budget hearings, how we work together and collaborate, and so we were an ideal fit to have the leadership and the county to come together since we do have close relationships, not only with our agency, but with healthcare, with our IT departments and so forth, to do this project. One of the key elements is that the county-operated health system, our health system here, sees the majority of our foster kids. So we're able to capture information from that system and work with it to test this model out, where in other circumstances, where we don't have an organized system like this, in other counties, you're having a diversity of health systems provide services to the foster children, which makes it much harder to aggregate the data in a fashion to use it. So this is a great pilot, and we're structured very well in order to make this successful. It doesn't come without some oversight and some efforts here. One of the early-on phases, that a couple of years ago, we were given some money and to develop the concept behind this. What would it take to develop an integrated system to make all the components work together? How you get it legal? What would be the governance model over that? That just doesn't come naturally. You have to sit down and think and work through those things. And so we've done that in our first phase here, and so we've developed a structure here where we have a steering committee, then adjuncts or subcommittees, stand committees, if you will, in order to address various needs associated with building a system around a foster child and the foster system. They may just, they're just titles there, but they're very important. Legal policy has been one of the biggest areas on how you integrate systems, let's say, the healthcare system and the child welfare system together legally, with all the confidentiality rules, with the system structures and so forth. So those have been important, very important structures and meetings, committees that we've had in place. We can't do this alone, and we recognize that. This is a little chart here to show all the individuals that have been partners and funders that have cobbled together their own funds and grants and so forth in order for us to fulfill this vision that we have to create a system for the foster children. So there are some of them that have been great supporters and advocates, not only at the funding level, but also in advocacy at the state level for policy change, for policy education, both at the federal level as well as the state level, to understand that the importance to bring all our diverse systems together for the benefit of children is an important issue, and we shouldn't be siloed out there in our respective disciplines but work for the common goal. So the partners have been excellent in working and doing that for us. So this is kind of the concept that we're working under to develop, is a system that can take information from diverse areas, culminate them into one presentable interface to an individual that's authorized to see that information. So that's what this chart really, really tells us here. So we're looking at taking first the information around a child in the child welfare system and integrate it with Cerner, which is the healthcare system, and say, okay, now we have a child that is known in both systems and has valid data that needs to get to a caregiver in order to take care of the child. We're going to merge that together and then present it to the caregiver so they can have that readily available there. The concept is similar here. We do that in some respects in paper, and this is a typical here. It's called a health education passport. And so it's, you know, has different tabs based on the child's well-being and health, and it's a paper format, and this then gets transported to a caregiver. And in a perfect world, it happens seamlessly. But as we know, when you're trying to update tabbed information, keep it active, keep it current, we're dealing with a large system. So a public health nurse may have seen the child and dealt with the needs there, and this passport's only as good as the information from the public health nurse gets into our system and then transfers to a social worker who develops this passport and then goes there. So there may be in real-time a lag. There may be updated information that happens in one sphere but doesn't quite get out to the passport in a fashion. That's not what we wish, but that's the reality of dealing with paper and with trying to keep it active and updated as much as possible. In addition, as we know, and as we try to keep stability with children, we do know children move from home to home. And so the importance of this information being transferred from one caregiver to the next caregiver may lapse and may have time delays. In addition, this can't be created sometimes in the middle of the night, and a child may be placed in a home in the middle of the night that has special needs or circumstances around them that if they have had previous information in the healthcare system, could automatically be available if it was electronically accessible. So that's the vision behind the importance of integrating the data.
Barry, what's MPI stand for and RLS?
Good question. These are the components of those. They're, the MPI is the Master Persons Index, and then you have a record locating service. So what we're going to do is first find an index to match that this person is this person in both systems, bring them together, and it's going to find the relative records that it needs on that person and then present them to an authorized individual through an interface. So that's the concept. To me, when I describe it, that sounds so simple, and yet, when I talk to Mike and others, you know, they say it's a little bit more complex than that, Barry, you know, and so forth, but that's the concept to bring them together there. So the benefits that we hope, and this is what we want to achieve, is that by aggregating health data and information around the well-being of the child, then all parties can benefit from that. Not only the caregiver, but the social worker will be able to see and understand things in a real-time basis. The clinicians also, as we worked with the healthcare system, and first of all, in our design of this, we worked with Dr. Michelle Lava, who has done most of the pediatrics for our children's for years, said what a benefit it is for also a doctor if they could have access to the system, understand the environment that they're coming from, to help understand maybe the condition of a small child. And so we think it's very beneficial for multiple parties, not just one way, in order to aggregate information around an individual. The way that I kind of phrase it to individuals, say, why is this important? Well, it's important in many respects, and this is, when a mother takes a child to a doctor, all the information about that child isn't in the doctor's records, it's really in the mother's head. And she says, oh, no, they're allergic to this, here and here. And so we don't have the luxury of having that intuitive knowledge in the foster care system. So in some respects, what we're trying to do is create that and create it in a fashion that information can flow into the system, not only through our systems and the healthcare system, but even from the caregiver, is the ultimate vision to say, you know, hey, the child reacts to strawberries, you know, and could put that into the system that may never be in a record of a public health nurse or so forth because they haven't experienced that condition. So that's the ultimate vision in order to benefit the children we serve. So this is what we've done on the project. We've had focus groups. We've conducted them with parents, with youth around this concept and got their input into it, and said, what do you like? What do you dislike? What would you like to really have in the system? We've got some great input into that. I would love to fulfill all those desires of it, but it's just, you know, funding is a limitation, and that's what we present, and we've worked with partners to do that. But ultimately, I think our vision will be very robust from our starting point here. We've outlined the business requirements of it, and what we've done is agreed that we are going to implement the first, really first major phase of this project is to replace this health education passport in a paper format and to get it presented in an electronic format, so that an individual can have readily available information upon placement of the child. Right now, we're going to limit our ability to health and well-being that's in our system, and ultimately, we'd love to have education put in there. So we have school records, so forth, so when a child, especially elementary age through high school is placed, we don't have, we know that they go to this high school, they go to this, oh, this is the classes they've had. You know, those types of things.
That'd be a pretty well-informed parent.
Yes.
Who can do all that.
Probably better informed than most parents, huh? So that is probably an add-on to complete our health education passport. We have some of that information in our system, but ultimately, we'd like it direct from the source itself there. So we've completed Phase One, that I'll say, Phase One, and we've created what's known as a knowledge bank, a directory, a resource kind of directory, as well as link to community services as far as a webpage, if you will, as the starting point associated with this project here. And it's centered around children. So the knowledge base that's attached there would be focused around children, children's health, children's well-being, and those type of things. So this is up and running today. It's called the Network of Care, and it's a company that we've used with the county in mental health before as a kind of a patient portal to self-assistance, and we're using that same concept here, that we've created a knowledge bank, a system of care around children's health. And so what it is, is kind of a service locator. If you have a question here, like for example, on healthcare, where can I get healthcare? You can subdivide it out and say, healthcare related to an infant. And you can click on that, and it will show all the providers in the county that provide services for infant healthcare and do it. As well as, there's topical items for knowledge. You know, you can put on there, like if you click on the weight button, you can ask a question, you know, what is the proper growth rate for a child? And when I play with this system, you can go, okay, from zero to one, they should grow at this rate and so forth. So it's a knowledge bank that's around the well-being of a child so someone could learn and take care of, well, is this normal? You know, I don't know if this is normal, and they can go and use this to benefit their knowledge and their... It's a powerful tool. Here's just a listing associated with the service providers, if you look right there. So like, it's going to list them in alphabetical order. It has a map that you can click on it, and it will show you where they are physically located, they're pinpointing them out. The things that I do like, then the knowledge base side here talks about, like, for example, medications. If you click on this, it will open up a window of medications, and you can say, well, what is ibuprofen? And it will come up and tell you what it is, what the generic names are for it, what the brand names are for it, what you would expect, how to use it, all those type things associated with it. So it's a really powerful tool as far as equipping knowledge around health, in particular with foster kids. So this is kind of another shot of it. So this is like the healthy weight, and you can find out information about it. Is this normal? Is this not normal? You can do a risk assessment tool, an interactive, I did that last night, said, check to see if I have a heart attack risk, and it goes through those profiles and simple questions. I'm okay. So, you know, it's a powerful instrument in a very simple layout and format. So that's really Phase One that we've done, associated with it. So now we're ready to really say, okay, it's a knowledge bank that's open to the public and in particular for our caregivers to access. So now we're starting, really, the meat of the project is Phase Two. And it says public health record, but it should say personal health record on it. We do not make these public. So it's a personal health record phase is the phase we've done. We've kind of created the structure to govern this kind of initial portal, a knowledge bank, that would be an asset to a public health record or a personal health record. And so this is our next phase that we're entering into and developing. So this is a conceptual idea, and it's similar to what we would see in a patient portal that we have in the Cerner system and so forth, is basically, an individual could log in or have rights to it and be able to log into the system and say, okay, this is who I am, I want to get my relevant information about services that I've received in the medical environment. So then it would have your basic profile, health profile, when the last time you went to the doctor, what your medicines are, what your physical measurements, as well as test results and so forth, are associated with your personal health. And so this is the really, the complementary part, or really the meat of the project here, is to integrate the systems to allow this. The knowledge bank around it would then allow us to say, okay, they're taking these medications. Now I have a knowledge bank attached to it, so I can look up that medication, say, is that the right reaction for that medication, or is that the right response that should be? Does it cause them to be drowsy? Does it do that? So now we've linked not just information, like you would see from a portal, a health portal per se, and say, okay, you're taking this type of medication, and then not understand what it is. We connect that with a knowledge bank to make that happen. So that's kind of the concept there that we have, as well as that this is like a section where you can update your own record. And really, a personal health record, the whole philosophy over it is to be participatory in both fashions, both from the clinical side or the doctor's side, giving you information and so forth, as well as your own record, to say, you know, you know, this is the way I feel, or this is the conditions I have after I take this medication or so forth, and I can input that in, so that knowledge then can transfer back to the doctor as well, so they can have a better understanding. And that's the whole concept behind this movement really around personal health records, to maintain and be actively involved so information can be shared in a real-time fashion and in a clean fashion. The principles that we're working under is that we're creating a structure in that first diagram of the Master Person Index and so forth, is to create an environment that allows multiple information portals to be plugged in. So whether it's education is another one, you could do various other portals of information to... to put the context around an individual. And that's what we're working to develop, the structure that makes it flexible in that regard and adaptable, as well as, we want to really set this up as a prototype in some regards, where other counties can take the prototype and say, this is a model structure that you can use in your community to access the same type of information there. So that's kind of the concept. The other aspects of it is, when we talk to the youth, the concept is that this gives them a place where they can have some permanency associated with information. Although we give them information on paper from time to time and so forth, this is an area that they can know and rely on, that is there. For their standpoint, they would like to expand this even further than even our concept to say, well, what about putting photographs in a personal space on there for me? In order to have that, a caregiver who may have a child that has a birthday, and has photographs or something that could restore that and keep it in a fashion that not only creates just health information as our only thing, but the overall well-being of sense of who they are is very important. And so this tool, as we develop this second phase and the understanding of its potentialities, could be very powerful for a foster child, in really understanding and giving them some sense of self and a sense of surety as they move on through adulthood. So I think the potentiality's big. The reason we wanted to give you an update today was, was not only just to give you a concept of the technology of it, but the importance and kind of use, you've been supportive in this whole process all along, but to support us in our effort to go forward and work with partners. And that's what we're doing later today, is that we've invited a bunch of interested individuals, if you will, and to say that this is worth your organization's time, as well as our time, to invest into this together. And so that's partly why it was important to get to your support and your endorsement to hear of the project that you've been involved with for some time. So any questions, comments on that?
Yeah. Go ahead.
I was going to ask, are they going to have a password for them to get into it? And how does HIPAA come in?
Yes. So, you know, our legal team there will sort all that out. But yes, it will be controlled, password protected, in the sense of only authorized individuals who can have access, will have access to it. We have that granting authority now, through jurisdiction of the courts, give the caregivers the authorization to take care of a child. So our wish is to facilitate that process in a fashion that that type of information can also be put in there from our system, so a caregiver can say, no, I have the directive to act in behalf of this child, and to do that. So some of the aspects we're asking for is to equip the caregiver with the right tools, so it's not a hassle for them to say, well, I know someone gave me a piece of paper, or, no, I am the foster parent, you know, but I got to find the legal document to say that I can act and enroll this child and so forth. And we want that to be a streamlined process.
It's good information, because that way, the doctor, whoever, the providers, they know not to commingle medications and make sure that they're.
Yeah, they'll rely on their system for the treatment and care. What we'll do is take their work and present it so we can use it. And so that would be good. What's beneficial for the, in particular with the county healthcare system that deals with our foster kids, is that we'll share information with them to say, this is the child where they've been, you know, what the conditions may have been surrounding the child, you know, that's appropriate to share. And that way, a doctor, in particular, a health professional, will have context by which they're evaluating the working with the child.
Excellent. Good.
I have a question, Barry. So the record's going to be on the cloud, the record's going to be in our system?
Yeah, the records will, the source systems will be the holder of it. And what it is, is the idea that you're matching them up by an index, and it will pull the data and present it. But once you're done with the data, it's not stored anywhere else, right? It's the source, the source systems will maintain the data. So in some respects, it's like I pull, I present it, when I'm logged out, it disappears in that regard.
So a foster child starts a transition out of the system?
Yeah.
Can this go with them?
Yeah, it can perpetuate with them. What we'll probably do is freeze, we'd have to freeze it at a certain point, but the concept, our original concept would be after they emancipate out, they would still have access to this information. We would back out of it and say, we have no rights to their system any longer, but they will have access to it. The way the system of care model is set up now, is that anyone can go into the system of care and set up their own personal account per se, and manage their own, let's say, health or information, so that model would continue forward with the child.
And they could dump all, that'd be invaluable for them.
Yes, to carry on, because, you know, when they emancipate, we give them vital documents when they emancipate, and that's another section here, is to put vital documents in there. But, you know, they get that, and maybe they put it somewhere, and they really need it three years from now, right?
They don't lose that. Teenagers don't lose that stuff.
And so this will give them a source that they could reproduce those documents.
And then in terms of, when this is fully functional and you have it the way you would like it?
Yes.
That a child goes into the clinic, the doctor with, you know, pump, you know, would this record be pulled up so the doctor could be updating that medical record right there?
Yeah, they would update it into their own health system, right? And then our system's just a presenter system, and so it would take it from the Cerner, the Cerner health system, and present it.
Automatically?
Yes. There might be a couple-hour delay, couple-hour delay, maybe a day delay, but as far as updating. But in concept, you'll still work in your world or your environment, and what we're trying to do is bridge those.
And we'll go in, we will, everybody doesn't have to log into this system, everybody just does their system, and we log into their system to go and grab.
Yeah, and so behind the scenes, they're working, the information is the concept. So it's not an easy concept. It's a big one, and so, you know, and so it's quite a challenge, but I think we're positioned to take that on.
My compliments. It sure sounds like the right concept, you know, and you're doing the right thing, so let us know what you need in terms of to be able to help make that work. Mr. Powers.
I was just going to say that, Parks, but I was just going to say that it looks like a great system, you know, having four kids, just trying to keep track of their immunization record that you need when they're going to go play, you know, sports, or they're going to be in a Boy Scout program, or, I mean, to always have to have that, you know, it sounds like it's good not just for foster kids, but this could, you know, be a prototype or something else for other kids too.
A community tool.
But I also really like the fact that it does kind of give them that identity too, that kind of goes with them. You got your birth certificate in there, I mean, it's just, and when you're very young, that may not mean much to you, but as you get older, it would. So it's nice to have that one solid place where you can go for it.
Yeah, and that's the vision, and so that's probably Phase 3 is vital documents and so forth, but yes, very important, I think. So thank you.
Suvezol.
This is very exciting. Thank you all, all of you who are partners and partners yet to join, but exciting, and I think it is empowering for those foster youth who are going to be serving, helping, and as they gain their independence, to be able to have this kind of information and feel like they have ownership of it is empowering.
Yeah, thank you.
Good work.
Mr. Powers. I was just going to say, I don't think we have to worry about them. When they get a little older, they're just going to want to stay in the county health system. It's not really a problem. But just to make sure I'm clear on this too, so social information to health and health to social, it's going to go both ways.
Yeah, it should bridge both ways. The original concept was that, you know, we'll have to work out, because we don't want everyone to have to log in multiple times, you know, but the concept is that as appropriate, a medical professional could see some of the social environment.
For the full context, yeah.
Yeah, so that's the concept. We're working through those details, and that's what I'm saying, the devil's in the details really, with some of our restrictions and legal parameters that we're trying to work through, but that is the goal.
Right. I'll just thank you to Barry and the whole team for the commitment and dedication as a long-term project.
And you may have some that is really easy to transfer back and forth, and other information that needs to be private, so it may be a dual system sort of in a place.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I've learned a lot about information. And so, you know, there's health information that is appropriate at certain ages, and when the child's a certain age, they have rights to that information where a caregiver doesn't. And so all that aspect is trying to be worked through, on to do it. Mental health information is treated a little bit differently than primary care. But the concept is that with technology these days, we can work it to allow rights to certain information areas that are appropriate based on the authorization of that individual. So that's the concept.
Good idea, and it really seems to have grown probably from the first seed, but it's just grown better, so just, great idea.
Are we supposed to ask your staff how savvy, tech savvy you really are, or what?
We'll avoid that question right now.
Well, thank you all for your support. Everybody in the audience that's out there that's been participating and funding, or volunteering, or everything else, try to pull those together. We really appreciate it. And Mike, thank you, and thank your staff for that also. Thank you, Barry. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you to all the partners. Thank you to the partners. Thank you so much.
All right. We're receiving and filing, we have the motion and a second in front of us, we're ready County Council, will we adjourn from closed session, or is there a possibility of an announcement?
I think we will adjourn from closed session. I don't anticipate any announcements.
All right, okay. So we'll adjourn from closed session, we don't anticipate any announcements. Thank you very much.